Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The microphones have been turned on and the cameras are rolling. For those of you who are not familiar with the layout of City Hall, there are two television cameras behind you, the audience, and there are two, one to my right, one to my left, behind the dais here as well. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 10 on Comcast and Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. This meeting is rebroadcast throughout the week and then archived on the city's website in perpetuity. We begin our council meetings with the roll call vote, and I ask our city clerk to please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jim Rodecky?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
Just for information purposes only, we have a... My suspicion is a lot of you are here for one of the items tonight, respect to Geneva Meadows. That issue has been bifurcated this evening. We are considering the comp plan vote at the council meeting, which is this meeting. We are considering the rezoning of that land and the development itself at the Committee of the Whole meeting, which immediately follows this one. For those of you who wish to speak to either the rezoning and/or the development itself, we do have sign-up sheets. No sign-up sheets are necessary for the council. With that, I would like to invite my good friend, Mr. Wayne Wolman, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
(Pledge of Allegiance) Let's alight in the spirit of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Item four, ladies and gentlemen, is the question of asking whether or not any council member and/or any citizen has an amendment to the agenda presented this evening. Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council but can be taken off the Omnibus Agenda should a council member and/or citizen have new and relevant information for this body to consider.
So moved.
Motion to approve the Omnibus Agenda by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Sino. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Item five passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 10, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $3,449,919.88.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in the... In tonight's agenda packet on the city website.
The motion offered by Alderman Bruno to pay the bills is presented and found on the packet and on the website is seconded by Alderman Marx. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. We skip down to Committee of the Whole, Items of Business, carried over from last week. Item 11A is to consider, correction, recommend Resolution Number 2016-69 amending the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation for the subject realty from single-family residential to single-family attached residential. The petitioner is K. Hovenian Homes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Cummings, seconded by?
Second.
Alderman Bruno, for the benefit of those joining us here and on television, this matter was considered by the Committee of the Whole last week under the tutelage of Alderman Rodecky. The vote to change the comprehensive plan for the prescribed purposes was a vote of six in favor and four against. This matter is now on the floor for discussion. David, how would you like to proceed? Do you want to hear from... We'll hear from you, brief comments, then hear from the petitioner, and I'm certain the council and community probably have some questions as well.
Sure, I guess, just speaking to this agenda item, this again is just to change the comprehensive plan from single-family detached to single-family attached. That designation simply states that the city would like to see some sort of attached single-family product on the property. That could be a duplex, it could be townhomes, but it does not really grant any rights to the property like the zoning request under the Committee of the Whole agenda tonight would do. The comprehensive plan does not make a distinction between that attached single-family product. There's no subcategory for duplexes or three flats, it's simply that single-family attached. I don't know if the applicant has anything they want to add to this item.
Are there any questions for Mr. DeGroot prior to inviting the applicant to join us? Representatives of K. Hovenian Homes?
Please leave your testimony stand.
You got it. From the city council. Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'd like to clarify my position to a certain extent. I think all of you know how I voted last week, I'm not changing my vote at all. I want my constituents, say, I want the citizens of Geneva to understand that there are issues which have come before us previously regarding a change in zoning from R1 to R6 that I had approved of. And I did so because I felt that they fit into that niche at that point in time. However, as you know, I am opposed to this change, and as I quote one of our friends in the audience, I would presume Mr. Manna had indicated, "I know that this is not spot zoning, it's just bad zoning, totally inappropriate for this area." And I agree with that, and I remain in that position, and I will vote in opposition to this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the dais, questions? Alderman Marx?
You know what, I personally think this ought to be... We should put this off till we finish the other two discussions on that parcel of property. I don't... You know, I would rather have it all looked at at once rather than piecemeal. So if I need to move it forward to the next city council meeting, or that, I'll make that motion. But I don't think it's right to vote on this. I mean, I voted yes for this last week because I wanted to have that discussion and listen to everybody present themselves and hear it, and I don't think we finished that discussion enough in order to just vote on this right now. I don't know, does he need a motion?
What is your motion?
I'll make a motion to table this till we discuss the other items and consider them all at once at the council meeting.
I think your motion needs to be to a specific date.
Date certain, right?
So it would be to the next city council meeting?
That would be fine.
A second.
There's a motion.
What's that date? I don't know it.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. I've been reminded by the city minister that the last time we discussed this, there was consideration about hosting a special city council meeting on the 22nd. Does the motioner and seconder concur that that council meeting would be that date for hearing this matter?
I will not be here on the 22nd. So it would be the next normal scheduled meeting?
It would have to be September 7th, which is a Tuesday. Excuse me, 6th. Forgive me. This is on the motion.
On the motion.
Alderman Bruno?
No debate.
Oh, excuse me, no debate, forgive me. There's been a motion. Does the motioner concur that that date would be September the 6th? Does the seconder concur? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
This motion carries 6 to 4, ladies and gentlemen. This matter has been tabled to September the 6th at the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We move on to item 11B, as in boy. Before we do so, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, any questions or comments of what just transpired with respect to this consideration at the council meeting? Mr. Augustine, join us, please.
Well, the audience have an opportunity to share their opinions tonight on these matters. I do agree with the Alderman, it makes sense to table this, have the discussion, because I think both items are very closely tied together. If you have as many people there, it would be great.
We have a committee of the whole following this special council meeting, or, excuse me, this council meeting, so absolutely, if the chair, who will be Alderman Rodecky, chooses to engage accordingly, that's certainly up to the chair. Mr. Rodecky?
Well, just a point of order and a point of clarification, it was my impression that we needed to go forward and have a decision. I mean, I guess I'm looking at it the other way, that we needed to have this in place before we went forward with further discussions. About the two items that are scheduled for the Committee of the Whole, so while I understand everybody's here and would like to get this done, I don't know that it's appropriate to have that discussion. If we're going to have them all together, we're going to have them all together. We tabled it, we can't discuss it when we have a table. It just kind of defies a little logic that we would now have a discussion at the committee level and roll all three of those things together, or all two, when we just said we're going to... We want to do them all together, why would we do two now? It makes no... It's not logical.
Well, if we do, then I'll certainly ask our city minister and our attorney to chime in. At the special committee of the whole meeting this evening, those two issues being discussed are the rezoning and the development itself. If, for some reason, they are defeated, the entire issue is defeated, quite frankly. If they are advanced, it would be my recommendation that whoever makes the motion, that the advancement be made to September 6th so that all three are considered in the same evening. That'd be my recommendation, but I do agree with you, it seems a little bit unusual, so...
I'll explain the way I took it. The vote last week was taken because we had to accept first the possibility that the council would consider a change to attach single-family on this property. That was done, so tabling this doesn't undo it. It enables the conversation to move forward just as the motion last week enabled to move the discussion forward. So tabling it until September 6th, when they can all be tied together and voted as a unit, is really no different than what we attempted to do last week, we just ran out of time.
But I believe the motioner said that he wanted them all considered in a package one time.
No, I just want them all at the same day. I think we bifurcated them last week, we should bifurcate them at the committee, that's all.
Thank you.
James Manna, or Jim Manna, 1254 Galway Court. I'd just like...
Evening, sir.
I'd like to be assured that whatever is decided tonight isn't taken up again on August 22nd than it is indeed.
You have my personal assurances this matter will not be discussed in a public setting until September the 6th.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, the city attorney has so advised me, rightfully so, that even if there is a negative recommendation on the rezoning and the development, those two issues will be advanced to the September 6th city council meeting. As all of you know, as Alderman Rodecky stated last week, the Committee of the Whole, which is the meeting following this one, is strictly a recommending body, so therefore, whatever recommendation is made, whether it be positive or negative, will be advanced to the city council on September 6th for the council's consideration. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, any questions we can help clarify or add to the confusion? We'll move on to item 12B without objection. Item 12B, ladies and gentlemen.
11B.
Excuse me, 11B is to recommend Resolution Number 2016-70, proposing the increase of rate of non-home rule sales tax in the city of Geneva, Illinois. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Sino. For clarification purposes, the recommendation is a one-half of 1% non-home rule sales tax increase. As most of you recall, the original discussion was surrounding a proposal to advance this matter for referenda... Excuse me, referendum on the November ballot. This council, acting as a committee of the whole last week, voted nine to one to advance consideration for the April 2017 ballot. Alderman Maladra?
We did vote nine to one to advance it to the April ballot. My position at the start was I prefer the places for eating tax. I threw that out in the beginning of the discussion and watched how the discussion took place. There were some people who were uncomfortable with November, some people who were uncomfortable with April, some people advancing it just to advance it, some people who were uncomfortable with November and April and were looking to make it the following November yet again. So I would like to put it out there one more time, an option available to us is the places for eating tax. It doesn't require referendum, its use of any revenue are not restricted to infrastructure only, as the sales tax wouldn't be if the state doesn't change its mind. And I think that it enables us, it positions us to meet our goals and objectives for floating any kind of revenue increase, including the sales tax, without any of the ingredients that made either November or April or the following November discomforting to people on the Committee of the Whole. So before we go forward again, I just ask that everybody consider that alternative, it's my preferred alternative, and that's what I would recommend.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion, sir? You want to hold off until additional comments are made?
Yeah, I'd rather do that.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Kilburg?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Pertinent to the items that we have on the agenda, item 11B.
Well, because it's my opinion, because the discussion last week was relatively round-robin with respect to what to do, although the advancement was nine to one to have a referendum question on April 2017, I do believe there's additional commentary still to be heard. I certainly have some comments to make as well.
Would it be more appropriate to discuss in the Committee of the Whole? This is what was advanced from the Committee of the Whole meeting.
That's true. It could be amended at any time as well. My suspicion is there might be an amendment coming up, so if you would indulge me to allow some...
Sure.
No, that's a fair question. Fair question. Thank you. Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. In lieu of conversations I've had with some of the library district folks and consideration for having two referendums on the same ballot, which I don't think is going to help anybody, and is just going to... The last thing a citizen's need is coming to the ballot box and having two taxes, difficult enough to swallow one. I'm in concurrence with Alderman Maladra that we go with the places for eating tax under one condition, is that those funds are allocated and only can be distributed with city council approval. In other words, I don't want that money going into a general fund, I don't want that money to be going into... I want it to be earmarked for specific items of need above and beyond our general operating budget. For example, if, you know, we need some infrastructure above and beyond, fire trucks above and beyond, plows above and beyond, kind of situation, I don't want that money to get lost in the general operating fund. And then I can support the places for eating tax, and then we can revisit the referendum in April of 2018. I know we have a 2020 deadline for general use of funds, but the funds can still be used for infrastructure, which can't hurt us either, so I would support Alderman Maladra if he makes an amendment tied to use of funds. Thank you, Mayor.
From the dais, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this whole topic's been rather lengthy and frustrating. I think it falls into the category of analysis paralysis. We seem to be in a position of having to have to pick the library board or the business community as to who to offend if we pursue the half percent sales tax, so I would be in concurrence with Alderman Maladra too. We can revisit it at the next opportunity for the April election. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Well, I tend to agree with Craig also, and with the last two comments, with a couple of other caveats with it. Number one is, you know, it's our own darn fault that we didn't get this signed. You know, we talked about this, we had agreement, we could... You know, we heard from the business community, they don't have enough time. Personally, I think it's our own fault, it's not on, we live with the consequences, that's fine. I want to remind the council too that we had clear discussions, that we said that as long as we're talking about additional funding sources, that we would also consider downtown business tax as a potential revenue generator, should we feel the need, that we would bring that back to light. So as long as everybody's aware that that is still part of the deal, I concur that I don't think it's wise to conflict with another taxing body on the referendum timing. I think it's our own fault, I think we'll either learn to live without it or generate additional funds in other capacities.
For clarification purposes, members of the council and all of you joining us and tuning in tonight, we will, or I will, require a vote on the resolution before you. It's my sense that that vote, Resolution Number 2016-70, will be defeated. I will then engage conversation and/or emotion from someone and seconded by someone else to direct staff to prepare a alternate resolution with respect to the places for eating tax. At that time, I will add some additional comments, so is that clear? There's a motion on the floor, there's a second for Resolution Number 2016-70 to put forward to the April 2017 ballot, an initiative to raise the non-home rule sales tax by one half of 1%. Any additional questions? Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir. Mr. Schiffler, how are you, sir?
I'm doing very well, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
My name is Bob Schiffler, I'm president of the Board of Trustees of Geneva Public Library District. I'm here tonight to ask the council not to place a sales tax referendum on the April 2017 ballot. As you know, the library district is planning to have a referendum question on that April ballot, asking for approval of financing for construction of a new library on the 6th Street site that we recently purchased. A new library building is required so that we can provide the services, the programs, and the resources that our users want and our users need. I believe that placing both these questions on the same ballot will impact the ability of either question to be successful. The library district does not have the option of going to the November ballot because of the time needed to, number one, complete a building program which identifies the required spaces and the overall building size, number two, prepare preliminary design information and associated renderings, three, finalize financial estimates, and four, communicate this information to the voters. The Geneva Public Library is a vital part of the greater Geneva community, and our programs and resources bring a significant, very significant number of people to the downtown area. As our mission states, we are connecting our community to discover, inspire, and grow, and we feel that the April referendum is a major step in helping us to achieve that mission in the future. I realize that the city council best understands the city's revenues, revenue needs, and I'm not suggesting that those needs are not real. However, I am asking that you consider other financial alternatives to avoid having to place a second referendum question on the April 2017 ballot. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from Mr. Schiffler?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience, any questions or comments? Is the council clear with respect to the vote before you, or the issue before you? It's Resolution Number 2016-70. Mr. City Clerk, a vote of aye is to stay the resolution, a vote of nay is to, for lack of a better word, kill it. Mr. Clerk?
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhart?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
The resolution fails with no affirmative votes and 10 nay votes. It's the recommendation of the chair, or mayor, I guess, to ask a council member, or, forgive me, to allow discussion with respect to providing direction to our professional staff about a resolution regarding the, what we affectionately call the PET, or Places for Eating Tax. I would like to make one brief statement first. I think all of us on the dais may very well find this ironic, that we began at this place almost six months ago, and now we're back to where we began. I would also recommend that if, in fact, a resolution is brought forward, that resolution include an opportunity for this council to engage the eateries throughout Geneva, some 88 or so, to communicate with them what this means, to communicate with them how we plan to invest the money, and to solicit input from them as well of how we should invest the money. No question about it, there are needs, there are opportunities, the city council ultimately has the final authority on how that money is invested, but just as we would have done with respect to a referendum question, we should also proceed accordingly with respect to our engagement of those eateries as well. So with that, the floor is open for comments with respect to direction of professional staff.
I was just going to offer a motion that staff...
Feel free.
Bring forward a recommendation for the places for eating tax, with all the caveats that the mayor just described, and Alderman's...
And that can be massaged, of course, at the committee meeting as well, so... Is there a second to Alderman Maladra?
I'll make the second.
Alderman Marx, any additional questions or comments? Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add one more thing. I'd like for someone to take a look at if there's any cost implications to the establishments being impacted. For example, is there cost to change software, is there cost for reprinting cost because of the tax, et cetera? And whatever that average cost is, if it's $100 or $300 or 400 or 500, whatever it is, that we credit those establishments for that cost of change and then start collecting after the fact, so there's no out-of-pocket cost for the individual proprietor with regards to this.
I think I...
Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly, thank you.
I think I know the answer to this, but those costs would have been incurred if we went with the sales tax increase as well, so why is that a concern now but it wasn't a concern with the sales tax increase?
Let me amplify...
Sorry.
No, you're right to a point, but I think, as we all know on the dais, Illinois statute allows for an eatery to establish their own additional, for lack of a better word, fee or tax to cover such costs as you addressed. They don't have to, but they can, so hypothetically speaking, if menus or what have you, it's going to be additional $500, they can implement that fee accordingly based on the statutory authority that's granted. Secondly, advancing this resolution, or, excuse me, this recommendation this evening will not yield a resolution on the 22nd, it'll be some time, and again, it can be implemented as we so choose with respect to feeling comfortable in our discussions with those who may be affected.
This discussion...
Any additional comments or, yes?
I'd just like to answer Alderman Maladra's question.
I think I have the answer, but I want to make sure.
Because I just thought of it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't even think about it until, a little slow. So I just thought of it. But I think that what I'd like to do is find out what that number is. If the number's a couple hundred dollars, I think we can, if the number's a couple thousand dollars, then it's a whole different animal. But I think it's gonna be on the lower end than the higher end, and I think it's a gesture of goodwill and the spirit of a partnership that we take a look at covering those costs. And when I say covering it, in other words, the, the, the first 100 or 200 or whatever that number is, is not collected, and then we collect after that. So that's the spirit by which I was trying to think of this and...
And all those details can be discussed when the draft resolution is brought forward at a committee of the whole meeting, absolutely. So any additional comments? We have direction provided by Alderman Maladra, seconded by, I believe, Alderman Simonian?
Marx.
Marx, excuse me. Roll call vote, an aye is to so direct professional staff, a nay is to not direct professional staff.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jermaine Rudecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Greg Maladra?
Aye.
Motion to direct professional staff, the draft resolution for consideration of a Places for Eating Tax passes with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote. Folks, according to my agenda, we're at new business. Any new business from any member of the audience this evening? Again, this is just the city council meeting. We will take a brief respite, and then I'll turn the chair over to Alderman Rudecki for the committee of the whole meeting. Anyone from the council with respect to new business? A motion to adjourn the city council meeting is in order, offered by Alderman Simonian, seconded by Alderman Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? A mic?
Good e-, good evening. Good evening. I'm Alderman Rudecki from the Fourth Ward, along with Ron Singer. We are representatives. It's my pleasure today to continue to chair the committee of the whole meeting, which was continued from last Monday. Let the record show that all Aldermen are present. The mayor is present as well. And I think we can skip right down to the first order of business, items of business, and add us to consider approval of a draft ordinance, rezoning, zoning map amendment, the subject realty from the R1 low-density, single-family residential district to the R6 medium-density, two- and three-family residential district, Cajovanian Homes applicant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Marx, seconded by Sino. Before we get into the comments, I'd like David DeGroot to please get up and give just a very brief summation for everybody in the audience, everybody at home, as to a very short history of how we got here. And then I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney to read some, some comments and clarifications as far as what municipalities, particularly non-home rule municipalities, what authority they have with rezoning or making a move from an R1 to an R6, and I think that'll set the stage for, for more comments. From that point forward, I will ask the, these people from the dais to make comments, and then we'll go to comments. We asked for a sign-up sheet, and I've asked for a separate sign-up sheet so that we make sure that we get everybody, get their comments in. If we, if people would like to have a second opportunity to comment, we would like to get through the first order before we entertain newer comments on the same subject for a second go-around. And we will consider these items as separate as possible. So we will consider item A first. I would ask everybody to attempt to keep their comments germane to the, to the item at hand and not vault forward maybe, which we tend to have a tendency to do for to the next. So anyway, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. DeGroot.
Okay, thank you. So last week, we considered the three applications for the proposed project, which is a 32-unit, 16-lot subdivision for, for duplexes. The first request was for the, the change to the comprehensive plan to allow for attaching a family on the, on the site. The items on the agenda now before the committee of the whole are the rezoning, which would actually grant the rights to the property.
Very well. Thank you at all.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to speak up. So the, the first request is to rezone the property to the R6 district, which would grant the actual development rights to the property. Last week, we heard concerns with the subdivision regarding stormwater management, traffic concerns. That was really specific to the proposed project. The zoning request to the R6 district would allow for two family units and also three family units, and that was a concern that was raised last week, and I think part of the reason that it was continued to tonight's meeting is there was some concern that if this project did not move forward as proposed, there's a potential for a three-dwelling unit on, on each one of these lots. I know the applicant tonight would like to present some additional assurances for the council's consideration to address that issue. As a straightforward zoning request, not a planned unit development, not an annexation agreement, there's little the city can do to condition the uses of the property beyond what's allowed in the R6 district. So I think with, with that, I'm open to questions, or we can get into further detail on that, on that issue.
So I understand there's little the city can do within, you know, the R6 district. What other districts are possible? I know we don't have anything on the books now.
Sure.
But...
But I...
Are there other R zoning districts that can be created?
We have, we have seven zoning districts, residential zoning districts. The applicant applied underneath the zoning districts that we have in place. So certainly, we could create a new zoning district, but the applicant applied for this development under those that we have in our, in our ordinance. What we have now, out of the seven, there's three of them that do allow for duplexes. That's the R5 district, the R6 district, and the R7 district. R7 also allows for multiple family beyond three units, so four units and up. The R5 district does allow for duplexes at a slightly lower density, but it allows for higher lot coverage, and it's really a district that's intended to accommodate the duplexes really in the downtown area. These larger single-family homes have been converted at some point over the last 100 years to, to a duplex or a three-flat and half higher lot coverages.
Because, as you alluded, the, the concern and the reason that this was carried over is, is that we find some way of, of limiting this to duplexes. And so I guess the question is, is there a way through zoning to accomplish that? Whether it be a zoning district that we have or not, this can, can one be created? And I'm just curious.
Sure.
I'm not advocating anything. I'm just...
So the R5 district allows for a lower-density attached single-family. It's 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. What the applicant has proposed is the same density. It's approximately one unit for every 5,000 square feet. So going with an R5 district would not necessarily result in a lower unit count for this property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, for clarification, there are some in the audience that I've had conversations with, and I, and I do believe I understand the direction you're moving here, but they've asked me implicitly to ask this question of you, and that is, can we ask that the zoning be changed from R1 to an R2?
Well, the R2 district is a single-family district.
Correct.
So the city can initiate its own zoning map amendment at any time, but the, the application that's before us is for the R6 zoning that's been initiated by the applicant. So the council would have to first consider this application and then direct staff to initiate an application to rezone the property to another district.
So if the R6 were defeated at this point in time, then we can initiate a zoning to an R2?
Or any other residential district.
Or any other zoning.
Yeah. I might make a suggestion here. We're kind of getting ahead. I'd really like, for Attorney Radovich, maybe this will clear up some of the questions that we're starting to flesh out right now. So I would ask the city attorney to please share some thoughts with us, sir.
Alderman Rudecki asked me to perhaps recite verbatim an informational document that I sent out earlier today to the city council. So for clarity purposes and succinct, succinctness, I'm going to read it so that none of it's missed. But during the past week, Director DeGroot and myself have been asked to opine on certain procedural and substantive matters relating to the pending applications submitted for this project that's known as Geneva Meadows. First, a question was raised as to whether the developer and the city could enter into an agreement which could modify the zoning uses or other developmental features. As a non-home rule municipality, the city is constrained to abide by its statutory grants of authority. In the context of rezoning property, which is not a part of an annexation or a PUD, a non-home rule municipality, and that's what Geneva is, lacks the authority to enter into a so-called development agreement. There are circumstances in which non-home rule municipalities can imply the grant of authority to enter into such development agreements in order to clarify subdivision-related matters such as variations or land donations. In such cases, the Illinois municipal code, and that's our Bible, that's the legislative grant of authority that the state legislature has adopted for municipalities, has various powers which imply this power, various provisions which imply this power. To create a development agreement which limits, quote, "uses" granted under the zoning ordinance could be interpreted to be a form of contract zoning, which has generally been prohibited under Illinois law. Therefore, a development agreement is not appropriate, in my opinion. Second, a decision or a question was posed whether the applicant or the city council could amend the application prior to the city council's vote on this application. And David just discussed the fact that the application is for an amendment of the zoning from R1 to R6. Since the public hearing on the application has already occurred, due process requirements would prohibit such amendments at this time. Third, the applicant has already suggested to the city council committee of the whole that the subject property and project will be developed for single-family duplex units only. And as David also mentioned, and I suspect we'll hear shortly, they're likely to offer to record a declaration of covenants and restrictions that will promise that a maximum of 32 dwelling units will occupy the property, and that this promise can be enforced not only by the applicant, that is, the developer, but also by any dwelling owner in, in that development, and by the city. Although such declarations of covenants and restrictions might be enforceable by the city, the city council does not have the authority to require the recording of this declaration as a condition to approving the R6 rezoning. This proposed development is not a planned unit development. The application has requested a rezoning to a specified zoning classification, that is, R6, and does not allow for conditions to be attached. To require such a condition as a conditional approval could constitute, again, a form of contract zoning, which is generally prohibited under Illinois law. Finally, notwithstanding the city's limitation on entering into development agreements or conditional approval of rezoning, the city council could require that the plat of subdivision show on its face that no lot shall be divided into more than two parcels without complying with the subdivision procedures that are set forth in the City of Geneva's, Geneva, City of Geneva's city code. Although this language does not limit the zoning uses, it does prohibit further division of the property without authorization from the city. So that was, those are the statements that I provided to the city council earlier today, and I think they addressed most of the issues that were, were raised or questioned by city council members and perhaps members of, members of the public.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Alderman Simonian?
This is for Chuck.
Mike?
You took your microphone. I'm sorry. Sorry. This is for Chuck. You said there, they can do a recording of declaration for the duplex, but we, but it's not mandatory. It's, it's, so we would have to, it would be, we would have to hope that they do that, correct?
Well, in most subdivision scenarios, even outside of the current situation we have here, a subdivider will put a declaration of covenants and restrictions that deal with homeowners' associations, the maybe architectural review rights, limitations on what you can do on the property, fences, all kinds of developmental issues. So that's something they can do without any mandate from the city council. They can do that voluntarily. The issue is that I think what they're going to propose is, they'll put, in that declaration, they'll say that this property can only be used for duplex purposes. And my point is that the, this city council cannot say, we're approving the rezoning from R1 to R6...
Conditional.
Conditioned on you making that provision in the declaration.
So we, we just have to take a leap of faith that they will do that, number one. The next question I have with regards to that, does that declaration follow the land or just follow this developer?
No, it, it runs with the land.
So once this developer sets that declaration, that's set in stone? That, if, if, if they sell it halfway through, it has to be followed by the next developer?
Well, I think there are provisions in most declaration, and I don't recall the, all the provisions here. Maybe David has one, has the draft that they did submit to us, does have a provision where you can make amendments to the declaration. So under certain circumstances, the owners could, could modify that declaration.
Okay, the next question, when you said that there's the subdivision, if they, if we limit the, the plat size or the subdivision procedures, that the, then they would have to have authorization of the city?
Right.
What, where in the city would that authorization lie? Would it, would it lie with the city council? Would it lie with the building department?
It would. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, who would give, who would be the authoritative for?
It's under the subdivision regu-, regulation, so that would be, it'd go through plan, commission, city council.
It would. It would be a plan, commission, public hearing, recommendation to the city council.
So if I'm, if I'm hearing this correctly, then if we went that route, we do have a safety net, so to say, through, through the plan, commission, and through the city council to maintain that duplex status, so to say?
No, I, I think...
Not, not on the use, but on the division of each lot into more than two parcels, it would require a plat of subdivision to be reviewed by the plan, commission.
Right, but they couldn't divide it more than two per lot?
Without that approval.
Without plan, commission, and city council being involved?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
David, one point for, of clarification for that also. However, if the, if it is granted to go from R1 to R6, while we do have protections that could potentially limit that to duplexes, the developer still, without our recor-, without our review, can still change the coverage, the size, and I mean, there are many other options available for changing the plan that we do not have any rights or... for changing the plan that we do not have any rights or review, such as a bigger footprint. You could have two larger duplexes than what they're currently proposing.
The zoning would establish minimum setbacks and maximum lot coverages for area requirements.
Right.
What has been proposed is near that maximum for the lot coverage issue, so there's not much more of a building footprint that can be accommodated on these lots. And the setbacks are pretty much at the minimum, so what has been represented is close to the maximum buildout of each individual lot. There's a little bit of flexibility for walkways and patios, but other than that, I wouldn't imagine each lot being able to accommodate much more of a building footprint.
I have one question too about the CCNRs. Could you clarify what, what other additional protections were being offered as far as covenants and restrictions?
I was going to suggest that maybe the applicant could review the specific provisions that are being proposed.
Correct. I mean, David and I, since it wasn't a condition of rezoning, we weren't examining the full details of those draft, that draft declaration. We were looking at specific provisions.
Then I'll ask you a general question then. I'll ask you a general question. If the developer puts conditions in the CCNRs, the developer originally will, will control the CCNRs at some point with the hopes that that's turned over to a homeowners' association.
Correct.
So then it would be up to the homeowners' association as far as any change with content to those CCNRs, not the original?
Well, it could be the owners or the owners of the units.
The owners, yeah.
Owners of the lots.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the desk? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you. A couple of things. We're circling around this limit to, to, two units, to duplex design. Looking at the lots, it seems to me, and Director DeGroot can correct me if I'm wrong, it makes it, even if we don't do anything, it makes it unrealistic to develop a three-unit building on those parcels. Because if they're three townhomes, it would be very difficult, given contemporary market demands, to fit within that building height that R6 defines of 35 feet. If we wanted to control that, we could simply not grant that relief. Attorney can tell me if I've said anything wrong. The other thing, so the constraining to, I want to make sure I understand, constraining the lots to not be split into more than two, how does that play out? So if they wanted to build three units, they split a lot in the middle and make, no?
Well, I think theoretically, and David can correct me here, they certainly could construct three units on one of those lots, even though there's a lot line division intended for two lots or two, two units on one lot. What I was trying to convey to the council is that as a non-home rule community, you have the ability to put some conditions on the way subdivisions are structured, just like land cash ordinances for schools and parks. That's an implied set of laws that have, has come out of the subdivision regulation portion of the Illinois Municipal Code, as opposed to controlling uses as a non-home rule community. We've already discussed that. So there are, there's some latitude that you have there. And it doesn't affect the uses, per se. It really sort of limits what they can physically do on the land.
Right, that's, yeah, I know that's where it was going. I just wanted to make sure I understood how that actually influenced deciding what uses could, could fit on there. So if we were to approve R6 here today and between now and a final vote on this, if the developer had that engraved on, on his plat, that would effectively constrain what could realistically be built there. Is that fair?
Correct. Well, I mean, the city council has to approve the plat of subdivision.
Right.
So it has to authorize it.
Yeah, assuming, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
In an effort to be redundant but clear, this question or comment is directed to City Attorney Radovich. In your review that you just gave, the letter, you read points one, point, point one, point two, point three are ideas that would not work, are not workable. Point four, mentioning that the city council could require that the plat of subdivision show on its face that no lot shall be divided into more than two parcels without complying with the subdivision procedures, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's what we go after, right? That's the, that is the strongest argument for preventing, I've heard two pushbacks from constituents. One, what's to prevent the group from going to triplexes? And two, what about water? Those are the two main, main ones, or number three and four, but number one and two are big. I want to find a way to make it as close to impossible for them so that we can placate the constituency, make it as close to impossible for the group to build a triplex. And does, does not point number four solve that issue for us?
I think partially it would, as well as point three, in that if the declaration provided that no amendment to the declaration could negate the city's, the requirement to have the city approve of anything greater than a duplex unit, we would have some enforceability of that declaration to uphold what you're trying to uphold. So I think the combination of the two. But again, the purpose here of points one, two, and three was to, I guess, tell the public out there that we all could be home rule and we wouldn't have this discussion. You could have a home rule referendum.
Absolutely.
So I just.
But, but to show the limitations of our current form of government, that we cannot do those things, you will have some power under point three. In other words, those declarations should give you some authority. You just can't require it as a condition of the zoning approval. And point four does give you some additional subdivision control.
So my feeling is regarding, regarding the fear that a duplex could metamorphosize into a triplex, I recommend we listen to the attorney, listen to the power that we're, that we are able to flex on this. Put that into place and move on to the next point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else from the desk before I ask the applicant to come up?
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. Vince Rosanova with Rosanova &amp; Whitaker, 30 West Jefferson Avenue in Naperville, and with me Scott Baranbrugge and Jim Trusdale, both with K-Hovanian. In regard to the concern, we certainly think it's a valid concern, and we appreciate your thoughts, and we appreciate Attorney Radovich's efforts as well as the memorandum he wrote. We understand that this council requires assurances that trust would verify, and we get that. To that effect, the plat of subdivision has already been amended pursuant to point four in Attorney Radovich's memo, with that language requiring that the division of these lots to accommodate any more than two homes has to comply with the subdivision control regulations and come back before this council after plant commission, which is required by Title 12 of the subdivision control regs. In addition, we understand pursuant to Attorney Radovich's memo that the city can't enforce us to record the covenants in a certain way. We're going to do it anyways. We've already amended the covenants. We've already submitted amended covenants to the city. The covenants specifically now say that there will be no subdivision of these duplex lots into any more than the 32 units that we've requested, and if any sort of request comes forward, that requires city council approval. Whether if it's enforceable or not, personally, I don't care. It's a belt and suspenders. That's going to be a deterrent from anybody even asking. The three of us were requesting permission to build 32 duplex homes, and that's exactly what we hope to build. A lot of engineering, a lot of technical work has gone into the plans, from the underground improvements to the water, the sewer, how these properties are going to be serviced. If we're fortunate enough to build, all the underground improvements will be completed in September, October, November, this building season, thereby further mitigating the opportunity for anybody to come in in the future and say, "We want to build three units." That's not going to be the case. The infrastructure's already going to be in. So we've offered to do everything from the development agreement to conditions in the ordinance, and I hope that that evidences our sincerity, that we're not doing any sort of bait and switch. It's the exact product that we want to build, that what we showed. We believe that the elevations and the duplexes are already attached as part of the subdivision approval ordinance, so I hope that, that our sincerity will, will be noticed.
Thank you.
I'd like to mention briefly that.
I'm sorry, please identify yourself.
Sorry, Scott Baranbrugge with Cabanian Homes. We've also added a provision to the declaration of covenants and restrictions that limits any future owners from amending that declaration without coming back to city council, so that language has been added as well.
Alderman Singer?
Yes, thank you. Gentlemen, hopefully this won't occur, but what's the prospect, the possibility that after a bit of time, things don't work out financially for your company and you walk away from this product? And there the R6 zoning is out there for whoever may decide to come forward to redevelop that property.
At that point, we have a few positives going for us to eliminate that concern. First, from a practical standpoint, the improvements are in. We've taken over in our day our fair share of defunct subdivisions. It's oftentimes a lot more cost prohibitive to tear out the existing sewer, the existing water, resize the detention basin to accommodate additional volume from your additional units that makes it completely cost prohibitive. We learned that lesson in our development experience. Also, there's the note on the plat that requires that developer to come back through plant commission, come back through city council, which certainly is not going to be seen favorably. I'm not Nostradamus, but that's the way that I would envision that going. And then the last thing is the covenants, although according to Mr. Radovich's memorandum, it might not be enforceable, but it is certainly a deterrent. Anybody looking at that, which is recorded against the property, runs with the land, binds all successor owners, is going to say, "I don't like my chances of this," and they're probably not even going to acquire the property because they know that the no is a foregone conclusion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, we do have a couple of empty seats if anybody would like to have a seat at the press table here. Okay, if not, I'd like to begin to invite the members of the public to speak. We did have sign up sheets, one for 2B, one for 2A. It looks like we also have a third one. We'll start calling off names, and please approach the microphone, and we will, we will go through one go around. If your question is answered, if you're, if what you have, it was addressed, we appreciate if you cede your time to the next speaker so that we can make sure that we get as many people in today as possible. Of course, if we cannot, if time does not permit, we will go as long as necessary with additional meetings or additional time. So with that, and I will try not to butcher last names, some of these I can't read, Arthur Peg, Peg, Paganesi. Thank you, sir. Could you please come forward, state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Art Paganesi, and I live on Sherwood Lane, which is kitty corner from the proposed development. My concern is the density that's being allowed on there. As kind of mentioned by your building commissioner and whatnot, it's close to 100% footprint, which means that there's no room for additional expansion, et cetera, on there, which means you're at 100% density for that property. R1 to R6 doesn't make sense in that area. It's too dense, too much traffic, too much water problems. We have enough water problems as it is. And you're going to put full density on there?
Thank you. Steve Sandman. Steve Sandman, 901 Sunset Road. I just learned about this just the other day, so I don't, I'm not real up to speed on all the studies that have been made, but my concern is the drainage. In 1996, there was a study made, 40, there's, I'm going by memory, and I talked to Alderman about this in the past, but there's 45 acres or so that drain right down into that Sunset Road area, Meadows Road area, from the south, and that's right where we're talking here. So our local area there, in about a four-block area, the water still backs up today. There's not adequate drainage in the storm sewers. And that's, when you put that kind of density in there, we're going to have some major problems, and everything's got to be corrected in there. So the infrastructure, not only in that area there, but I'm guessing that the water is going to all drain up toward the railroad tracks and then down that way. So I, you know, I don't know what's been done with that and building that up, but it really has to be taken care of because it's going to impact many, many people, just not the builders who want to go from R1 and put more on there, and it's just a money game. I would say, keep it R1 and build up the infrastructure. Thanks.
Thank you. Jay Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Dahl, 1122 Brigham Way. Well, so the issue is this, the zoning, and not the other issues that everybody's talking about. We get that. The problem I have, though, is that, as the last gentleman spoke, it has to do with the density in there. Everything around it is R1, and now you're going to put in an R6 zoning so that we can have multifamily dwellings. It's going to be like an island of multifamily dwellings out there. I don't see any other ones around except to the north of the railroad track, which used to be the old pool. The other issue I have, or question I have for the councils, right now, there's the special service area number 23, of which Sunset, Sunset 2, and Sunset 3 all drain into. This also will drain into that because that part, that next to the electrical station, drains into that retention pond, which drains under Western Avenue, and then drains again toward Brigham Way and toward the Chime Development, time, the ones over behind me. So anyway, are they going to be, is this subdivision going to be part of special service area number 23 over there? Or is it going to be free for them? Or how's it going, the financial burden going to be handled on that? You get more people there, more drainage there, it's going to put a harder drain on, or use on that special service area as it is right now. So you're going to have more cost. And unless we increase or make sure that this subdivision is part of that service And unless we increase or make sure that this subdivision is part of that service area, somebody else is going to have to pay for it, meaning all the residents of that special service area at the moment. So that is a concern and, you know, now we're talking about dollars again. Somebody's going to have to pay for it. It should be, if there's going to be new people there, they should be included since it's their water draining into that service area and that's being paid for by the other residents in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask Mr. DeGroot or Mr. Babica, any comments about SS number twenty-three?
This subdivision would have its own retention pond that would be, would have a backup special service area for this pond. So the homeowners association for this subdivision would be required to maintain it. In the event that it wasn't being properly maintained, the city would be able to levy a tax against the property owners of this subdivision only to go in and do the repairs that are necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Manna?
Jim Manna, twelve fifty-four Galway Court. I would like to present you with additional petitions that we've gathered since we were in the last week. Thank you. That brings us to about a hundred and seventy signatures that you've got from residents of the city who surround this property. We're talking about going from R one to R six. That's it. You don't have to placate the residents, Mr. Cummings. We're all here to say you shouldn't do it. You shouldn't go from R one to R six. I noticed we only have about five people scheduled to talk. Is anybody here against this zoning?
Did you?
Raise your hand.
They couldn't put-
We're all here for the same reason. You shouldn't approve this zoning. You shouldn't go from R one to R six because it's going to destroy the character of our neighborhood. It's going to increase the traffic, it's going to increase the density, and yes, it probably will cause flooding to people downstream. I know we have engineers telling us that that's not going to help, that this is not necessary because all the engineering is great. Well, I know we've been accused of being short sighted. I hope you're not being short sighted. When this goes awry, we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Alvarez.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Council. First of all, I would like to thank you for the formal sign up. Last time I was here, I think two years ago, you didn't have the formal sign up and I like that you're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act this time. I'm here in support, I think. We just heard that there's a lot of people not here in support tonight, but I'm here in support of the change to R six. I have listened to the applicant, I have done the research, I have practiced law in this area, and I'm confident that this is a benefit to our community. Few things, density. These lots are already planned out, we know that the covenants are going to run with the land, we don't want to see a lawsuit, and that lawsuit will take up time. No one's going to change this, this is going to go forward as it is. When we go through with the zoning process, we've heard about a zoning map amendment instead. If we put this down and we say no, we're going to go ahead, start this process over, have a city council initiated zoning map amendment, how long is that going to take? How much longer is this property going to sit vacant? I'm completely for this project. I also have several other points not related to this, but I have a letter from some constituents who live in the area who can't be here tonight that would like it read into the record.
Please do.
My address is ten eighty Ashbury Court, right off Country Squire. Mayor Burns and Alderman, I too have been a Geneva resident for quite some time. Some of you may know me and others may not. For those that do know me, you know how much I love this town and love to see all the wonderful progress and positive changes that have been brought. I am currently a resident of Eaglebrook and have been for the last three and a half years. I grew up on the east side and have seen many positive changes through the years. One of the great things about our nice town is that we have seen it evolve into a very sought-after community where people want to raise their kids and/or retire. I feel this development is what will do that. I have seen many of my friends' parents wanting to move to avoid upkeep and maintenance on their homes, yet still remain in Geneva and feel as if they are part of the town by staying east of Randall, yet south of thirty-eight. They should be given options and I fully support this project. My only suggestion would be to put the flashing stop sign back at the four-way stop of Western and Fargo due to concerns with people not stopping there. People unfortunately still blow through that and it could ease minds of other residents. I'm sure some of you cringe every time a new proposal comes up because not everyone agrees and it usually results in loud attendance at city council meetings. Please know that my husband and I fully support the proposal and do not see a traffic threat, property value risk. My husband as a mortgage broker agrees, height, difference between duplex or single family, and are not concerned about water retention as is on the other side of Eaglebrook. Not to mention you guys will follow the codes and ordinance for displacement, which are stricter than the current codes and ordinance in place. The two, a hundred-year plan on page sixty to sixty-five of the application, I believe, more than adequately address any stormwater concerns. That's my side note. As much as I miss the Geneva greenhouse, that lot has been empty far too long. It would be nice for the property to not be vacant anymore. Look at the people who moved to Bentry before Randall started booming. They now face the back of Home Depot because they didn't do their proper research. I encourage and support moving forward with this project. Regards, Todd and Jill Johnson, sixteen oh seven Fairway Court. And that's all I have on the zoning amendment.
Thank you. Tom Cervenka?
Good evening, Tom Cervenka. I live on eleven twenty-two Wyndham Court, which is, my driveways are actually on Country Squire and I can see the former greenhouse property from my driveway. I've been here about twelve years, I've got three boys, and I just want to address two different subjects. R one to R six, it's a huge density pop. It's a, it's pretty much a spot zoning. The comprehensive plan indicated R one, other development deals that have been addressed or changed the comprehensive plan. The plan was a TBD on those parcels. This was clearly R one. I think it'd be setting a bad precedent to do a spot zoning to R six. Someone could come up and grab two or three parcels of R one, come in and say, "I want to rezone to R six," and, you know, the precedent's been set. More importantly, my active boys, one of which is playing my phone back there, they are always trying to ride their bikes and Western Avenue is very difficult to cross. They sit there at that curve, sometimes five, ten minutes, waiting for a break in the traffic. It's kind of a blind curve. This increase in density, thirty-two units, what, two cars per residence, sixty-four more cars coming and going right there, it's going to make it a little more difficult. My kids are technically walkers to Western Avenue School and when I called the school requesting bus service, that Western Avenue was not safe for them to cross, I was told they should walk down to Brigham and then up to Fargo. So Western Avenue or the DOT for three oh four, they agree that, you know, Western Avenue is already not, not safe for pedestrian traffic there.
Thank you. Mike? Thank you. Mike, I can't make out your last name. Honeyman? Hannigan, you guys had trouble reading your last name. Thank you.
Mike Hannigan, I'm not a resident, but I work here in Geneva and I'm representing Mr. Manna and potentially others in opposition to this zoning change in this plan development.
I'm sorry, who is it that you're saying you're representing?
James Manna.
Mr. Chairman, may I kindly ask-
Certainly.
-whether the speaker is an attorney?
That's what I just said. I said, "I represent Mr. Manna."
I know accounts represent people, I know. So I just want to clarify-
Oh, okay. Okay. Are we done with that? This is the third time, this is the third time I've been in front of this council in three or four months and all three times have involved issues regarding zoning changes. And I'm beginning to wonder whether or not zoning has any sanctity in Geneva. You have residents who have lived here for forty, fifty years, paying their taxes, protecting, tempting to protect their property interest, and every time a developer sees a property for sale, they're in front of this board asking you to change the zoning laws and allow them to do something that doesn't necessarily fit with the residents. And the question is, who is here, who is here on these committees and in this government to protect the residents and to protect the existing zoning laws? You have a business that was there for forty years and a neighborhood with residential R one zoning grew up around that business. Now the business is gone. What's wrong with converting the neighborhood to single-family residential homes? When did it become a bad idea to live in Geneva in a single-family residence in R one zoning? Why are we placating, Mr. Cummings, the developers instead of the people who have lived here for forty and fifty years? Why are we increasing the density and trying, just like the Dunkin' Donuts that you all were considering two months ago, trying to pigeonhole multifamily living in a single-family residential area? How does Geneva benefit from that? The developers haven't told us, we know how they develop, how they benefit from it, but how does Geneva and the current residents, longstanding residents of Geneva, benefit from having you folks approve apartment buildings in their neighborhood? This is a bad idea. R one-
For a point of clarification, we're not approving apartment buildings. Is that correct? I mean, look-
You're going from R one to R six. You're not preventing the development of apartment buildings. And your attorney said you can't prevent it. All you can do is rely on the assurances of a developer who you've never dealt with and apparently never looked at the comments on the internet about. Look them up on the internet, see what other people in other villages have to say, having dealt with them.
Okay.
So it's a bad idea. It doesn't fit, so why do it?
Thank you.
May I?
No. Thank you. Mr. Brian Funkhauser?
Good evening, Chairman Rodecky and ladies and gentlemen of the committee. I'm not an attorney, I just dress like one. So let me introduce myself. I'm Brian Funkhauser and I built about ten years ago a home that backs up to the property. You may be familiar with it. I actually think it's on the developer's plot of their property.
Your address is?
Ten eighty-eight Dunston Road.
Thank you.
Ten eighty-eight Dunston, I'm sorry. And so I'm sure it's a familiar property to them. I want to first start by saying, some might imagine that someone whose home backs up to this property might just like to keep it as it is, have their own personal park in the backyard and leave it as it may be. Actually, that's not true. And when I bought the property, my builder fortunately gave me the heads up that what was going on at that time, the Augustine plans weren't, hadn't been published, and so I didn't, you know, I didn't know in advance, but decided that, hey, if it was going to be a residential community like I expected, and actually quite candidly, like my builder expected would be built in Geneva, you know, single-family residential R one type project, it seemed like the right thing to do with the property that was there and in the right direction. So I am, I'm in favor of it being developed. I'm not in favor of it being developed in the way it is planned as an R six development. Let me, let me start by saying that I've lived in Geneva for almost, well, probably over twenty years now. Ten years, three or four years away, came back and it's been a big part of my, of my life. I grew up in Sycamore, I've always admired the community of Geneva, and I think that what I'd like to start by saying is, the standards, the high standards that Geneva has put in place over many decades, many decades, of zoning, building standards, both commercial and residential, is what has made Geneva the place that it is today, the place that I think all of these folks are very proud to live in, like myself, and hopefully a place you're all proud to represent. So thank you. Congratulations on a brand that, when I travel around, I do consulting work, I spend my time all over the city of Chicago as well as all over the country, but the people that realize that Geneva, Illinois is not Lake Geneva, those people, those people know that-
Because we have good drainage.
Those people know that Geneva's something special and people in communities that are considered very, you know, affluent and highly regarded communities around us, look up to Geneva as a standard, and that standard has been developed by the city leadership over, over many decades. The decisions that you have made and your predecessors have made about zoning, about building, are why we have the reputation, the brand that we have today. And so, thank you for that. I guess I would say that is why I'm shocked and disappointed at this development, that something in the, I guess I would call it the heart of Geneva, one of the neighborhoods, many wonderful neighborhoods in Geneva, there's sort of these neighborhoods that are close to the city, close to the train stations, just have these wonderful locations of, a mix of homes, newer and like mine and older, but they're neighborhoods that have a brand themselves about the kind of property and the kind of experience that families have living there. And when I first got the news, and I have to admit, I caught up a little late in the last couple of weeks to everything that was going on, I was shocked, I was disappointed and a bit surprised. I guess I would echo what some of the other comments have been, which is, you know, I understand the need for these multifamily type of offerings in Geneva and elsewhere. I think that there are certainly people who, that is a good thing for them at a certain point in their life, and I also think that there are places where they fit, you know, the corridors, the places where it makes all the sense in the world, it fits into what's around them. This does not fit into what is around it, the neighborhoods that are, that are around it. You've heard great explanations, I think, this evening about the density issues, what will do to traffic. I think you've heard great explanations about what might happen to drainage and so on. I haven't heard a lot about the concerns about property value, and I'm sure I'm not the only person that, that thinks about the property value impacts of different types of developments being dropped in to communities that have a, you know, a brand and a reputation of their own. So, you know, I have a newer home, there are homes of different size and different age and so on in our community, but I can't imagine that any prospective buyers, for those who end up in a position of wanting to sell their home, that any prospective buyer is thinking, "Boy, I sure hope there's duplexes in my backyard or next door or across the street." I, you know, I'm, I'm in the, I don't know, fortunate or unfortunate position of having one of the newer homes, maybe one of the more expensive homes, probably a million plus if I were to resell it, and I don't think it's on the list of folks that are looking, you know, folks that are looking for a home like that, that would say, "Boy, I sure hope there's a duplex complex behind, behind the house." But, but that is not, you know, just my dilemma, I think it's the dilemma of everybody around us in terms of what we think this will do to our community. So I guess my plea to you is, Deloitte, or Deloitte, just talking like I'm, gave away my company name here. Geneva has a, has a brand, has a reputation that has been decades and decades and decades of development, that have been, have been founded upon what city leadership, this council, the older persons, the, you know, the mayor, the zoning councils, the, the building committees and so on have, have, have developed. It's, it's your doing that have created this brand that we have and this reputation we all enjoy. Please reject this application. Please go forward, or don't go forward with, with this. Keep Geneva as the envy of all the communities around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conisek?
Dan Conisek, twelve forty-four Galway Court. I am an attorney, I wish I dressed as well as Mr. Funkhauser. I wish I dressed as well as Mr. Funkhauser. A couple of things. I also, I'll disclose, I am on the zoning board of appeals for this community. The zoning board of appeals does not get to hear this case, so I don't have a conflict. I am opposed to it. But interestingly enough, Mr. Radovich, the route that you're taking, or not you're taking, your memorandum of which I didn't have a copy, but I took pretty copious notes, I'd like to discuss some of that with you to make sure we're all on the same page. Is that all right?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'm talking to...
Address it to the chair.
So, Mr. Radovich, we are a non-home rule municipality. And the Illinois Municipal Code would prohibit, as this council or somebody suggested from my left, your right, that we do a friendly amendment to the zoning. That's not possible, right?
I already addressed that.
It's not possible.
As an affirmative answer, yes.
All right. So the other implication is, and I think everybody needs to understand, is that the possible way that somebody is suggesting is that we record a plat, but in order to record the plat, we would have to change the zoning from R1 to R6, right?
The sequence of events is, obviously you need the zoning to be in place before a plat of subdivision that endorses that zoning is effective, correct?
So the committee here is discussing as a committee of the whole whether or not we're going to change from R1 to R6.
Correct.
And the purpose of changing from R1 to R6 into, I think what Mr. Cummings said, to placate the 170 people who are against this, is that somehow we could implement a plan that we could never enforce against the builder for constitutional reasons, that they record a plat that says no more than two parcels, right?
No, I think that the subdivision plat could be, is enforceable, because that is a separate item. So if there's a prohibition on dividing the property more than, into more units than two, that is an enforceable action by the city council under its, the Illinois Municipal Code, as well as our own subdivision regulations under the city code.
Okay.
That's subdivision.
But in order to get there, a plat would need to be recorded, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then if there's a problem...
Cross-examine.
I am. If, I want to, the only reason why, Chuck, is because these folks should know what somebody's suggesting here. So if we do this recorded plat, and it's been suggested that if we record the plat and then we do the offer of declaration that this group has so kindly offered to do, there is no guarantee that somebody could not argue that is contract zoning or spot zoning, correct?
Let me deal with the contract zoning. That's a possibility, Dan.
So everybody...
Spot zoning is a different legal...
Okay.
And I was going to address that later because it's been mentioned a couple times.
All right. Let's focus on the contract zoning. So let's pretend that the council votes to change the R6, and let's pretend they record their plat, and let's pretend they do the declaration. And let's pretend further that, I don't know how many builders have gone out of business, not be able to finish a project by virtue of whatever. Does everybody remember the 2008 collapse where we all saw the 170 people and everybody in this room saw the values of our homes, I think it's Mr. Moldato, shrink to almost half what they're worth? You said, what about our future and the future of our kids? The future of most of these people here and our children are in our house because that used to be an investment. So that's why we are concerned. We are concerned about the future.
Is the question directed to the city attorney?
It is. I'm getting to it. And affordable housing is nothing anybody suggested, okay? So if we're going to talk politics and affordable housing, that's not the appropriate place.
You want to have fun like that?
I will. The second part I want to talk about, let's pretend...
Excuse me. Please address your question to the chair. And if it's germane with a legal issue, the city attorney will address it. I appreciate it. I know the committee does as well. And I think the audience does too. So please stay on point with your question. Love to get the answer to it.
The next part...
Please direct it to the city attorney or myself. Thank you.
Somebody could come in and say, you know what? We don't like the recorded plat, and we don't like the declarations, and there could be a lawsuit. And you can't guarantee the people in this room or the 170 people that object, or some of the city council persons that object, that a court in Kane County, 2nd District, or Illinois Supreme Court would uphold the plat or the certificate. Can you?
Well, first of all, Dan, I would never guarantee that there wouldn't be a litigation. There can be litigation on any issue, whether it has merit or not. The outcome of which, you're talking about the outcome, sure, there could be an allegation that there's contract zoning. What I advised the council tonight was that they could not make as a condition of their approval that the developer record those declarations with those kinds of covenants and restrictions. That would be prohibited, and I, in my opinion, that would be contract zoning.
Okay.
Now, as long as we're...
Skip the spot zoning for a sec.
All right. Very good.
Then the other part that I want to go to, and Mr. Funkhauser raised a good point. And again, I'm giving information that I have in virtue of the fact that I sit on the zoning board of appeals. And just the other night, a resident of this county, of this city, came in, and they wanted to take, they're an older couple, the Carlsons, they wanted to divide their property, which is just minutely shorter than it should be, into two lots so they could develop, or she could give a lot to her son. And Mr. DeGroot poignantly stood up on behalf of the city and said, if we start making exceptions to what we've developed in zoning, then everybody will come in. And my ears perked up because that's what I do as a lawyer, and I listen. And I thought, well, isn't that something? In 1995, you had a comprehensive plan done, some of you weren't sitting on the council then, probably most of you. I know Mr. Singer was. And we paid a lot of money to outside lawyers from Chicago and to outside developers from out of state to do the zoning, the very zoning that said this greenhouse area should be R1. Now, if we change it to R6, and we, and it will allow or could allow duplex or triplex units, aren't we doing the same thing? Aren't we agreeing to change something when we've already said this is the way it should be? Chuck, isn't that what we'd be doing?
Oh, I'm not sure that's for me to answer. I think that's not a legal question.
You're the only one answering my question.
And so I think I can dodge that one.
Okay.
Would you agree, Mr. Dahl? Mr. Saifanda?
I'm almost done.
I've got all kinds of lawyers in the front row here.
He agrees. Mr. Dahl, Mr. Saifanda. Last two points, I know other people want to speak, and I think everybody would like to hear this, because I think somewhat we've been not given all of the information. Your council just approved a very similar development behind the labs on Route 31. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
So, Mr. Cummings, when you said that this is good for Geneva because it's 55 and older and people can walk to the city, the plan that you approved just two months or three months ago behind the labs, that's for 45 or 44 similar units, isn't it, for 55 and older? Am I right? And that's closer to the train, I suspect, if one were to go down 31 versus have to go down Fargo and then take a left and walk to the train. So is there any guarantee, has anybody done any study, that we need, so what is that, 44 plus 32, that's 76 in addition to what we already have, homes for 55 and older? Do we have any assurance that the 32 homes will actually sell?
Well, actually, I'm glad you asked that question. It's a good question, and it's a fair one, and I think it was brought up last week as well. And I think Mr. Augustine might have brought it up about the market for it. This is from the MLS, from MRed. Oddly enough, I just got this today sent to me. The question about, and this does not deal with age-specific housing, but with attached versus detached. Would you find that of interest? Because if you don't, I'm not...
This is being sold as 55-plus.
Excuse me. Can I ask you a question? Would that hold any validity if I told you what the demand is for detached versus attached?
That's hearsay. I reserve the right to cross-examine the person. I'd want to know what town. I'd want to know how the developer or how that person has any insight into what Geneva wants, desires.
Well, here's the facts, and you can cross-examine all you'd like.
Well, I can't because the person's not here. That's why it's hearsay.
In the Fox Valley area through July of this year, home sales for detached or single-family homes grew by .35 percent, less than a percent, comparing 2016 to 2015 year-to-date. For the same time period, detached homes, which is what we're talking about with the duplexes, a form of it, grew by 16.55 percent.
Okay.
So that...
So...
So, I mean, clearly, that demonstrates the need that there is more need for this housing.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
And I'm looking forward to the cross-examination right now for the parents.
No, I don't want to cross-examine you, Mr. Burns.
Nope. Hey, not Burns.
Oh, Radecki, sorry.
Those are fighting words.
It says Burns. It says Mayor Burns down there.
I've already got your permit, but I mean, I don't know if you...
So, Mr. Radecki, the information you just gave us, the 16.5, what are the...
So you are going to cross-examine me.
What was the sale price?
I wasn't preg.
What was the sale price?
I don't have average sale prices.
So if somebody, they've said $300,000 to $400,000. So if you, the Fox Valley, by the way, the area that covers from Elgin to Aurora. So you're telling us, and you want these people to rely on a document...
In Geneva, it was 13.6 for attached and 22.9 for attached.
Wait a minute. Say that again. You just said...
Six for Geneva. For detached, the growth was 13.6 percent in sales. For attached, it was 22.9 percent.
You said .3.
No, that was for the Fox Valley. This is Geneva in specific.
All right.
There you have it.
So then my next question is, when Mr. DeGroot stood up and said, well, if there's a problem with the flooding because the owners of these homes, which you want to create in the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions into a homeowners association, if they don't pay, then the city will force them to pay. So is that through a lawsuit?
No. Under the Stormwater Management Ordinance, which is county mandated, every location in Kane County is under the requirements to adopt the Kane County Stormwater Management. But under the Stormwater Management Ordinance of the city of Geneva, this type of development must have a backup special service area so that if there's a homeowners association with this development and it fails to maintain the stormwater system, then the city can activate a levy of taxes under that special service area to pay for whatever remedial requirements there are with the stormwater management.
Okay. And if there's nobody to pay the taxes because we don't have people that want the houses, then do they just pile up on the property?
It's taxed against this property.
So when it's taxed against this property and there's no homeowners and this storm sewer that's supposed to be created doesn't work, the backup, and the levies keep going up and up, if somebody wants to purchase that property, do they have to pay down those taxes?
If it got that far, I mean, I, you know, that's a question.
Okay. And then the last area I wanted to ask about is... And I understand you all are here, and it's difficult, as it may be, when people are upset about it, and I apologize, but being a homeowner for 20-something years, I am upset about it. Watching kids walk down Western Avenue, I'm the one who fought to get the stop sign put in at Western and Fargo because it was so unsafe. I do like my community. I love my community. The good thing about Geneva, and if you haven't recognized, the kids come back. My 26-year-old daughter lives right down the street from me with two grandchildren because it's a great community. I'm not saying, Mr. Moldato, this is going to be some terrible thing, but you're talking about 32 units. 32 units. That's, I'll get you in a sec. 32 units. It doesn't fit. You're changing something that when I bought my house, when Mr. Funkhauser bought his house, when Mr. Manna bought his house, when Mr. Thomas bought his house, these are all my neighbors that I've known for 20-something years. It was an R1 zoning, not R6. And last thing, and I hate to be a fly in the ointment, but last hearing, one of you said that you may buy one of these.
No, I said that.
You did.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Well, no, you said it. You said it, Mr. Cummings. And Attorney Radovich, I would move to disqualify Alderman Cummings. It is a serious conflict.
Oh, gosh.
And I, you know, you can laugh, but it's not a laughable thing to the people behind me. When you say something, and you may characterize it as flippant or anything as you want now, but the fact is, and the record will show because I listen, that you said, I may buy one of these. And I think somebody over there echoed, but it didn't show up in the hearing thing. That is a financial conflict of interest. If the city goes forward on the vote and you participate, I will sue. Period.
Thank you, Mr. Conisek.
Oh, I'm about three or four blocks away from this property. But I'm here tonight because I'm concerned, are we listening to the constituents? You know, I sat through the Plan Commission meeting, I think, 10 or 15 people spoke that night. And it's sad because people walked out that night shaking their head, what happened? I think there was a vote eight to one, another vote was five to four. It shot through. And it concerned me. We all love this town. We're all here tonight because we love this town. And I'm sure it's the way, the character, we want it to continue on to be the town we all love. But I felt we walked out of that meeting that night and not, it didn't matter what the people said, the commission was going to send that thing through no matter what. Didn't matter. It just like, why even bother come? Why even bother talk? There was an agenda to get this thing to the next level, it felt like. It just didn't feel like, there was no compromises, petitions. The petitioner didn't come forward with, you know, maybe there's another solution. Maybe the Plan Commission could come forward with an alternate. Maybe there's some green space options. Maybe there's some open space options to dedicate some land. No one wants 60 percent coverage. We all live with 30 percent coverage around that area, and you're going to drop 60 percent in, and the traffic. I won't really be impacted by this, but I'll be impacted because my kids walk every day down Meadows to Cheever. And you know what? There's a section on Cheever that stops at Dow, and there's no sidewalk over to the park. And every day, my kids have to walk down the middle of Cheever to get to the park. And there's no sidewalk. So whether this project moves forward tonight or sometime in the future, let's tag the developer to put some thousand-feet of sidewalk in and make that safer so we never look back at someone gets hurt. But it's concerning, guys. We have approved two developments, I think you did, over by Geneva Golf Club and one down by Hotwood Mifflin. And those are really considered, I would say, transitional parcels. They have industrial around them. They have other uses around them. You're taking this property and dropping it in the middle of R1. It just doesn't make sense, people. It doesn't make sense. Listen to your constituents. I mean, this council member got it right last week. He says he's been here since 1986. You know why? He listens to his constituents. Listen, guys, we're all saying no to this project. Don't feel bad about them. They'll be fine. They're developers. I'm actually a developer by background. We all spend some money sometimes. We don't always get every deal. I don't come to every one of these meetings expecting to get everything I asked for. I oftentimes, there's fallback positions. I'm sure they have a fallback position. You're giving away Geneva's prime dirt. This is some of the best R1 dirt in Geneva. I've seen in my neighborhood alone, we've had, Mr. Funkhauser feels so content, we've had five teardowns, new builds in Sunset, Meadows, Hawthorne. R1 housing is very hot in Geneva. This property would eventually be R1, absolutely be R1. Unfortunately, the market collapsed, what, 2008, when it was proposed by, I think, Augustine had 13 lots there? It will eventually be R1, absolutely be R1. It will eventually be R-one, absolutely be a great R-one lot. It does not make sense to be R-six. Please, listen to your constituents and reject this proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Spanda.
I live at ten thirteen Dunston Road. I just want to know for housekeeping purposes, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Radovich's memo going to be part of the record in this case and will it be available to us to read?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
We all paid for it. Mr. Augustine.
Todd Augustine, twelve twenty-six Fargo Boulevard, Geneva. Just point of clarification, this gentleman, it was twelve lots in that proposed subdivision that didn't make it through, but it was R-one. But I'll keep my comments brief this evening. I, you know, I spoke last week and shared my concerns about moving from an R-one to an R-six and the density that this development posed to the community. Couple of points, though, that I would like to bring up that I didn't share last week. And one is, I think we spent an awful lot of time last week and this week talking about, let's make a deal. And I think that what the community behind me is saying is, we don't want thirty-two units. We don't need the guarantee that there'll be thirty-two units because we don't want thirty-two units. And there's been a lot of discussion around that. So that's just a, a, a point that I'd like to make. Let's focus on what they're bringing forward and not try to find a way to work around it and protect our behinds. Let's vote on the thirty-two. The people that are voting for all of you are saying we don't want thirty-two units there. And another matter, there was a reference made last week by one of the Aldermen about two recent multifamily projects that have been approved. And one is down at, I believe it's called Riverbank, River, River South. And the other one is, I think, Park Place. I think we both or all of us know where those are located. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would just like to share a handout.
Sure.
So for the folks behind me that don't have this, color printing isn't cheap. I've done a screenshot, Google Earth, of the three developments, the two that have been approved and the one that is on the dais in front of the council tonight. The first one, and I'll point this out to the, to the Aldermen and women, the first page is the Riverbank Project. And I would just like to show you that this is not similar in the, in regard to the property located on Western Avenue. And I'm going to show that by pointing out it, the adjacent properties that are contiguous to these two locations. The first is the Riverbank Project, surrounding area. Directly east is the River Labs, which is an office research facility, and also State Route thirty-one. To the north is single-family homes. To the west are single-family homes. To the south is a very, very large Houghton Mifflin manufacturing facility and parking lot. And then a little bit further south of that is the four-story office complex and the Campton Building and medical offices. This project shares Route thirty-one as its main ingress and egress. So if you look at the screenshot at the maps, you'll see where this property is and you'll see that basically two sides of it is very, very transitional, to the point of being manufacturing in one case. So if you could turn to page two, this is the Park Place Project up thirty, up just north of thirty-eight on thirty-one. And kind of the same general format here, the surrounding area, immediately to the east is State Route thirty-one, and then one block further east is the old manufacturing bottling facility. To the north is the parking lot for Wheeler Park. To the west is a cemetery and then a large amount of commercial along Stevens Street. And then to the south is single-family for about two blocks, and then you get to the downtown. Again, the main ingress and egress is State Route thirty-one. Now I ask you to turn to the third page, which is the proposed development site. You'll notice very quickly on the screenshot that you see nothing and absolutely nothing but single-family homes. To the east, single-family homes all the way to the river. To the north, single-family homes all the way to the railroad tracks. To the west, single-family homes all the way to Randall Road. And of course, to the south, single-family homes all the way to Fabian's. Now, I differ here, the main ingress and egress is not a state route. It's Western Avenue. And I think all of you know this community. Western Avenue to the south has a school, an elementary school, kindergarten through sixth grade. To the north, a block and a half, it has the Park District property, which is a swing pool, workout facility, baseball fields, tennis courts, and a small children's playground. These sites are not the same. They're nowhere near the same. This is not a traditional or transitional neighborhood. It's a R-one residential neighborhood. And I ask that you look at that when you're considering this. Not whether or not you can guarantee that the developers will do thirty-two units or not. Thirty-two units is too dense for this property. This is our, one of our last genuine R-one pieces of property. Let's, let's preserve that and let's protect our property values. I think one of the gentlemen earlier said, we haven't really even looked at property values. And I do think that this does have an impact on the, on the residents around this property. You're not going to have people that are going to want to move into necessarily a neighborhood that has thirty-two duplexes located on it. So in closing, I would just like to say that please take this into consideration. Your vote is important and it's also longstanding. What you decide here tonight, next week, on September sixth or seventh, whatever the next meeting is, is long-lasting. And your constituents are here. People are behind me saying that we don't want this. And I just ask that you would take that into consideration and give Geneva what, what the community wants, what these folks are saying we want. And Geneva really does deserve better than this. My last point is, I'm not going to stand up here and argue whether we need multifamily. Sure, we do. And River South and Park Place is a great place for it. It's transitional. It fits. Western Avenue property, it's not a fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waltman.
My name is Wayne Waltman. We live at nine oh-two Meadows Road. We've lived there for forty-one years. And we've seen a lot of change that's come in our neighborhood and in Geneva. I don't have a whole lot more to add to what people have said, my friends and neighbors have said tonight. I just urge you to listen to their voices, to listen to their concern, and to recognize that we need some help. And we turn to you as members of the governing body of this city to act in the common interest that's best for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Merchut.
Rhonda Merchut, twelve twenty-five Fargo. I've been listening to how you've been trying to find a solution and you've keyed in on that R-six makes us very vulnerable to putting three apartment, or three units on each one of these plats. And I really appreciate the effort that everybody is doing to try and mitigate that risk. However, there's more risk than that with the R-six. One, these two, these duplexes, assuming that these workarounds work, could all be made two stories without any change to anything that's happening. They don't have to come back to you. It's allowed within the R-six restriction. That's a very big risk. These are, again, these will be five thousand square foot buildings that are two stories high, twelve feet apart, twenty feet in the backyard. They showed us nice plats that said, oh, they're a hundred feet away from the adjoining property. Eighty percent of that is our property. They don't have any backyards that they're do, that they're doing. They're taking advantage of our backyards. So I think you have to look much more at the risk of R-six than just whether it's two, two units or three units. It also can be two stories going up the full thirty-five feet and very tightly in there. It has the same height restrictions as an R-one, again, that only covers thirty percent of the lot. Now they're going to cover sixty percent. So you have to look at all of the vulnerabilities when you're evaluating what our risk is to our neighborhood, our atmosphere, our R-one feeling when you consider this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Lazins. Lazins.
I have a question.
Right ahead.
The only control we would have under the R-six zoning is the maximum building height of thirty-five feet.
Ben Walde. I think these people spoke. Brian Borkwitz.
I'm actually here for the ice drink discussion, so.
I believe we have one other person, and I know they signed up under two B, but I think I'll give them an opportunity. Jim Laporta. Maybe he's there for the ice drink, too. Okay, we've, okay, before we go back and entertain any other comments, I think I would like to open it up to the dais for any additional comments, please, based upon some of the input we just heard. We'll go with Alderman Singer, Alderman Bruno, Alderman Simonian to start.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to question the developers, if I may.
Right ahead.
Would you be kind enough to put up on your screen the content in which you contend that you're providing affordable housing?
You had. Well, we're going to, I think for the purposes right now, Alderman, that we want to stick to the zoning question.
The zoning question?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's straying a little bit off.
Will the issues regarding the cost of this product, when will that be germane to this discussion?
Should, should this move forward, it'll be on the next item. And we'll get into great detail with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno.
Yeah, can we clarify that very quickly? We're not, we're not proposing quote-unquote affordable housing. Prices starting from the three nineties.
Thanks for asking a question I wouldn't let you ask, but answer. Thank you. Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My notes are fragmented, so what I say will be fragmented. First, I think maybe on behalf of Alderman Maladra, I, I kind of resent when we don't think we, when it might be intimated that everyone up here might not listen to constituents or might not love Geneva or not be thinking about this. We've got some, some interesting things to discuss here. As was brought up last week, we've got, we've got to think long-term. There are some very real long-term trends. Opposition is not universal to this. If you ask someone over sixty, where are they going to move in Geneva? There are very few options when their knees get weak as to some type of one-story living option. That, that plays into our discussion. I think long-term, we need to integrate more of this type, this type of housing. Yes, some other, some other transitional housing's been implemented, very little one-story. And even at that, it, it's, I don't think it even amounts to one percent of our housing stock. So to, to think this is just crazy that we even entertain this, there are woefully few and very rare parcels of this size in proximity to downtown that we, we can consider these things. If, if we, if we, if we don't think about how we're going to accommodate millennials, how we're going to accommodate seniors, then we're not doing our job. Flooding's been brought up often. A number of things been brought up often, and I appreciate that. And, you know, if, you know, we've, I am satisfied that the engineering that goes into the, the higher standards for flood control won't, it may not improve, but it certainly won't exacerbate. I think it will improve flooding in the area. Or, or help mitigate flooding is probably a better term. It's all about words, right? It's all about words. I'm satisfied with the traffic analysis. You're right, Western Avenue is, is tough. I turn on Country Squire often. That one, that one turns challenging, but I'm, I'm confident that the traffic analysis, which we, which we have had vetted recently by a third party, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. Someone brought up that the kids come back. Yes, I'm, I'm, that's, that's true. We have, we are in the midst of a seismic demographic shift. We, we boomers are, are not carrying the load of the biggest demographic anymore. You know, is, is a joke that one of the Aldermen could move into something like this? At some point, I'm going to want some one-story living options. I think everyone is going to want some one-story living options at some point. And we are forcing a lot of people out of Geneva, seniors, that simply don't have the housing stock to, to choose from. Heard the argument that property values would be diminished. I haven't found any analysis to suggest that. The.
You know, can I, can I just say one thing? We listen without interruption and appreciate your comments. Please show the same respect for an Alderman or any member of the committee that's speaking. I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know where this will go long-term, but to think this is a slam dunk as to what we need to do for the best long-term, you know, we are, you know, we are thinking, we are considering the residents. We are considering your children and your grandchildren. We are considering the inevitable demographic shifts. These all play into what we, what we have to, what we have to deliberate on. Let's see. So someone brought up, I think it was you, Wayne, common interest. Absolutely agree. Everything, I know everything I do up here is for the long-term common interest of everyone in Geneva. That common interest could change with any individual's perspective. I think we all swear to do the best we can with the knowledge we have. This is, again, I don't know where this will go. I, I still have concerns, but on its face, we genuinely need higher-density housing. We genuinely have very few opportunities to do it. I think we've all recognized and had, kind of recoil from density that we don't want. You know, tall townhomes in this, in this case. We want to keep the, keep the scale smaller. I think, I'm, I'm hoping that you can recognize from our conversation that we're genuinely trying to, to thread that needle as a non-home rule community. We have woefully few options. And I hope, I hope someone's keeping a list of all the things people want us to do that we can't do is, is non-home rule. That's not germane. So again, I, I don't know where this is going to go. I still have questions of staff. I guess I can, I can bring this up now. I guess I can bring this up now. Is the other... The issue of zoning, of R6 as it sits on our books. Director DeGroot, could you describe for me... What's the process? If we just wanted to invent some new zoning, how would that impact the timeline? And what would the public process be to create, basically, duplex zoning, if, let's say?
Single-story duplex.
Staff would have to draft a zoning district for consideration and outline parameters such as maximum densities, minimum setbacks, maximum building heights, and present that to the Plan Commission for a Plan Commission public hearing and have that recommendation forwarded to the City Council. Typically, on a city-initiated request like that, we would actually first come to the City Council and kind of ask for that general authorization and direction before doing that. So a timeframe with the notices that would have to go out to everybody in the public hearing process, I would guess three to four months, moving quickly, you know?
That's what I kind of had in my head. But I just wanted affirmation on that. Thank you. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. David, I got a couple of questions. And I can't, off the top of my head, remember these, and I'm hoping, because you're a lot younger, that you can. The Havlicek... The Havlicek Lot at South and Western?
Yes.
What is that zoned?
That was recently rezoned from R1 to R2. So it's a single-family residential district.
Okay. And how many acres of debt does that entail? Do you know of?
Approximately nine acres, give or take.
And the number of homes he's proposing to put on there?
Twenty-one lots, I believe.
And the average size of the home?
I think what was represented was around 3,200 square feet.
And what... You know what the price point he was looking for?
I want to say it was around 700.
I think it's in a little nicer neighborhood than that, probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Meladra?
There's a lot. Some of it I wanted to get to earlier, but didn't, so I'll go all the way back to that. Heard a lot of what I call hyperbole tonight. Heard that what we're doing up here is playing politics, which I resent. I heard somebody else state affirmatively, not even as an implication, that what we're building is apartments, which I believe is multi-family housing. And I don't know how many times we've said that this is single-family housing. Yes, it's attached, but it's single-family housing. I don't know what the technical definition of an apartment is, but if anybody out there believes that that's what we're doing, they're sorely mistaken. And I've heard promises of lawsuits. This is what I call rational discourse in my community, I guess. So clearly, the issues have become heated. The issues have become emotional. And when that happens, I tend to try to tune out the noise, tune out the emotion, and focus on facts. Some of what I consider to be facts include the objections. The real objections made here have been flooding traffic and property values. Flooding, to be honest, I've heard from some people tonight who created change in this very area that resulted in neighbors in this very area complaining about that change, saying that it would contribute to flooding. So I always find it interesting when those who initiate change stand up later on and oppose change as being bad for them. Nonetheless, we have engineering standards at the county level and at the city level that we apply when change is being proposed. And if, under those standards, the change can take place, to me, that's mathematics. And everybody likes to hear the numbers don't make sense, the numbers don't add up. But I believe, in this case, the engineers like to be told their business as much as the lawyers in the House like to be told, "Well, hey, Judge Wapner said it was this way, therefore, it must be." I heard a comment about this developer and everything that we've read on the Internet. I would like to point out that it's a fact that everything we read on the Internet must be taken at face value. The traffic concerns, again. David can speak to this, but we did have our traffic engineers take a look at the traffic concerns, and they are negligible. It seems that everybody's gravitating towards the extremes. Good to laugh. Thank you very much. See, we could get into this duel all night. You can say, "This is what you believe," and you're as well-grounded in that. Oh, wait, maybe less so, because at least I've got an engineer's study. So as long as we're going to get out of the realm of facts and into the realm of belief, I'll talk about what I believe. I believe that mix of population and mix of housing is critical to the strength of a community. I believe in work that we spent years on, this thing called Homes for a Changing Region. I believe in the premise that, over the next 20 to 30 years, there'll be a shift to a market-based demand for more compact locations with shorter commutes and more community amenities, such as the ability to walk to local places. Just because a person may not want exterior maintenance on their home doesn't mean they have to be located out on Randall Road. I believe in the comprehensive plan, which has in it objective number seven, encourage new residential development that provides for a range of housing types that meet the lifestyle needs of the city's population. So I have a hard time seeing anything that we're talking about as being contrary to any of the planning processes that the city has gone through over the last several years. I believe in the Geneva brand. I believe very strongly in the Geneva brand. I believe that the Geneva brand includes the Muse on 7th Street, which met with a heavy amount of opposition. I believe that the Geneva brand includes the Havlicek Development, which is across from a factory. We're all concerned about the impact on our property values from a couple of duplexes. A factory doesn't seem to worry anybody. I believe that the Geneva brand can absorb a mix of housing stock and actually be enhanced by that. I believe that the Geneva brand will include the Riverbank Development that Mr. Augustine spoke about. I believe that the Geneva brand will include someday a very popular Park Place. Regarding Mr. Augustine's points about the area being different, this is really the one part of this that has bothered me since the beginning. But as I was listening to him explain all of this, I was going back to the discussions about Park Place. And really, all I heard is, "Our R1 is more R1 than those other R1s. And therefore, you shouldn't make this change here, but it's okay to make it there." Those residents who spoke about Park Place and others felt as strongly about the change happening in their communities as you people feel about the change happening in yours. I believe that our community brand benefits from that change. I believe that our community brand will benefit from this change as well. An opportunity for whoever. You know, we can talk about it being seniors. We can talk about it being newlyweds. I don't even really care who it is. An opportunity for somebody to buy a $400,000 property within walking distance to downtown that has no exterior maintenance doesn't seem to me to be a bad thing, a bad option for our brand to absorb. So what I hear is a lot of fear. I hear a lot of emotion. I hear all of that fear and emotion backed up with statements that I don't believe are backed with fact. We even had a debate about the impact on property values. The sad fact is that that impact won't be felt for years. We have people who feel that there will be a negative impact on those property values, but the people who oppose the Muse felt the same way. The people who oppose Park Place feel the same way. And we have some evidence from Realtor associations that that is not likely to be the case. So I just try to focus on facts and steer clear of the emotions. And I think that this ends up being a good thing for Geneva. Oh, my last comment. I was bothered by the ability for this to turn into something... Excuse me. That it's not promoted as. But I believe that we have the ability to make sure that what goes there is what we discuss with the next item. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the deus at this time? Alderman Cummings?
I look at the alternative between duplex housing and single-family housing. One of the... Some of the concerns are water. But with the changes that are going in in this site, and this is regardless of whether it's a single-family or duplexes, the water runoff then, a few years into the future, once this is complete, versus now, off into Western Avenue is a 75% reduction. The water runoff reduction on the north property line is 95.5%, 95.4% reduction. And this is... I think if we look at the increase in roofs and hard surfaces, we have to look at what else is being done. In other words, what is going to be done in this site? And what are the effects going to be? And so with water, again, 75% less water running onto Western Avenue, 95.5% less water running north. On the east and the south property lines, this piece will accept all runoff from neighboring properties. Another concern that constituents brought up was traffic. Traffic from the duplexes versus single-family. My kids, all three, went to Western Avenue. I've been in Eagle Brook since the '90s, in Geneva since the '80s, and in the area since the '60s. I used to run along Randall Road. It was less busy than... Less busy, probably, than Western Avenue is right now. So I'm concerned. I do think about the traffic. And I could go out there and I could guess, or I could look to resources that are written by people that do traffic studies, eight hours a day, 250 days a year, for 20 years. And they bring them out in situations like we're in. And I know some people will say, "Well, we're different." I'm kind of a numbers guy. It's hard for me to look at statistics. And every time we run into something, someone says, "Well, we're different. We're different." But according to the numbers, we go from... With single-family, this will increase total... A total increase of cars per hour on a weekday morning with single-family homes. We would go to 18 more cars per hour. You know, that is not... Nothing. That is 18 more cars. A duplex arrangement with that number of units, we go to 21 cars per hour. So we're not going from zero to 21, because, again, a lot of people are arguing that we should stay single-family. We're going from 18 to 21. Now, somebody might say, "Wait a minute. Those numbers are wrong." Well, which one is wrong? The single-family or the duplex? My guess is that if you're in favor of single-family, the duplex number is wrong. My guess is, if you're in favor of duplexes, the single-family's wrong. Nonetheless, it's a three-car-per-hour difference. If I'm doing my math right, that's one car every 20 minutes extra if we go to duplex versus single-family. One car every 20 minutes. The weekday evening hours, it's a little bigger difference. Single-family, 16 cars per hour. Duplex, 24 per hour. It's eight cars per hour. Weekday evening peak hours, my guess is it's past 3:00, when the kids get out of school. Nonetheless, it's still eight cars. Still eight cars more per hour during those evening peak hours. And that's probably as close to the facts as we can get. We can say, "Oh, the numbers are wrong. There's going to be 100." Well, you know, I can't believe that the numbers here are saying three, and it's actually going to be 100. So I go with these. I don't think it's a dramatic increase. I look at the water. 95% less water runoff. I can remember seeing Western Avenue with a foot of water under it, and the Geneva Greenhouse property with probably a foot of water on it. I look forward to getting this property developed and the water problems going away. Seeing as how those are the two... Seem to be the two main issues, that's what I'm focusing on. The water and the traffic. And I would like everybody to keep those in mind in particular, because they do seem to be the biggest issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the deus? If not, I'd like to make a couple. First of all, I thank everybody for your participation. I want to thank everybody that stuck to the issue. I want to thank people that brought constructive comments. Ms. Alvarez, thank you very much for having courage to come up in the room and speak your piece. I admire and I appreciate that. As has been said, and I think Mr. Funkhauser said it, about how disappointed you were, I was disappointed too. I was extremely disappointed to hear one long-term resident threaten to sue a council because of an utterance that we all know that, in spirit, meant nothing for which he's trying to disqualify a vote. That's disappointing to me. You know, when people talk too much, my experience is they're losing an argument. I think that the answer, at least for me, when I get to situations like this, tend to be more simple. And here's where I land with it right now. Do I think that this, you know, density is going to really change things that much? No. Do I think that it's going to create insurmountable traffic? No. Do I think that it's going to exacerbate existing drainage? No. Should residents have good reliance that we have a comprehensive plan that states one thing, and that we have zoning that states one thing? Should they be able to rely upon that? I think yes. Before we make changes, and I said this with the issue of Dunkin' Donuts, before we make changes to any of our plans, whether it's a PUD, whether it's current zoning, whatever the case, whether it's our comprehensive plan, you know, I have to seriously weigh the benefits to making that change to how that does affect the people that had perhaps some detrimental reliance upon that. So before I cast my vote on this, you know, I think it's fair for me to tell all of you that that issue is one of paramount weight with me and one that I consider very heavily before we make any changes. Do I think this type of housing is definitely on the upswing? Absolutely. Is it something that would be prosperous and sell and do well? Absolutely. My concern, much more, much more, is that we do very little to create affordable housing. Maybe some people's kids can move back into this town. My wife and I have eight. They're grown. I'm not so sure how many of them can move on. Those are bigger issues for me, is that what are we really doing? Are we really putting our money where our mouth is with those issues? Something for thought when we meet and we have our discussions in the fall about... Something for, for thought when we meet and we have our discussions in the fall about strategy and about our comprehensive plans, including this issue and other issues, I think we need to look at them with a much closer eye. So, again, before we ask for the, the vote, and again, this is a recommending body, okay? This is not the final vote here. This is a recommending body from the Committee of the Hope to the City Council, simply on the matter of zoning. So, again, thank you all. I appreciate your comments at this point. Alderman Simoni? Just one, Alderman Simoni?
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry for waiting till after you. It wasn't intentional. So, you brought up some, some points I was not gonna discuss until the next item, but it, it, it sort of borders the item two and item three. I have some, I have some serious concerns with regards to this whole R6 zoning and this duplex and manage, being able to manage and control those duplexes with all the, whatever the terminology was, plat of subdivisions and declarations of recordings and all that other stuff. Me personally, I think we should do it right and we should, if we're gonna, if we want to have a restricted duplex ordinance, we should create that ordinance and then, and then follow that versus trying to patchwork this one because this is not gonna be the first one and I'm guessing it's not gonna be the last. That said, I asked all those questions about the Havelcheck development at South and Western because the easy answer here is go to George and say, let's swap lots, let him build the duplexes and across from the factory and, and, or you guys build the duplexes across from the factory and let George build the single-family homes here. That would be the easy answer. The likelihood of that happening is slim to none. But that said, listening to everybody, all the calls I've gotten, all the emails I've gotten, thank you very much. Appreciate it. You know, in these matters here, I don't wanna discount emotion, but at the end of the day, it's, it's facts and information that, for myself anyhow, I have to make these decisions on. And there's four determining factors here for me. One is water, one is traffic, one is density, and one is safety. Water, I have no problems with. We've had three different bodies reviewing that and I, whether it's gonna be single-family or it's going to be duplexes, I think the water issue is going to be controlled as best as possible under the circumstances. Traffic, I, I question. I still think that I, for me personally, I'd like to see a third-party traffic study done of the city's choosing. Safety, I think there is safety issues there with or without this development. I think there's safety issues there that we should take a look at as well. And density, I calculate, I calculated out just out of curiosity with the Havelcheck development with the nine acre, nine acres versus the 7.4 acres, the 21 units versus the 32 units, 3,200 square feet versus approximately 2,400 square feet. And it comes out on a per-acre basis, the Havelcheck density on a per-household comes out to about 7,466 feet and the development in question comes out about 10,378. I'm not per acre, I mean, not per feet, per acre, and about 10,378. So, it is a dense, a more dense scenario. So, the density issue, what I'd like to see is the developers at the Riverbank Labs went from 45 units down to 40. They reduced theirs by 10%. The Marquette, although it didn't go through, they started at 237 units, they ended at 200, I think, in two. So, they're willing to reduce it, although it still didn't pass. I know John did something at River Park Place as well to impact that density. I'd like to revisit the density here as well and maybe bring that density down, but I still am not convinced that some of these things are adequately addressed for my comfort level. But I definitely, definitely don't wanna patchwork the R6 scenario. So, I'm not gonna support this move to R6, not because I'm not willing. It's because I wanna see an ordinance that supports what we wanna do instead of trying to patchwork it for this particular situation. And unfortunately, you know, I know it's not in the developer's best interest, but it's gonna take time to do and, and I can live with that time personally to do it right versus trying to patchwork something to get it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Alderman Maladra?
Along those lines, David, if I could go at you again. So, Alderman Simoni is back where we were last week. We have this general discomfort about being able to ensure that these remain duplexes. Is this plat of subdivision the only avenue available to us? Or can we walk away from this and create a zoning district that says duplex zone?
And under, under the current application, the language on the plat of subdivision is our option.
Just curious if there's any other option not under the current application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Charlotte Sir from the Uptown, please.
Thank you. So, on the, the issue brought up by Alderman Simoni, and we appreciate the thought, it's important to clarify that the note, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the note added to the plat of subdivision is actually a reaffirmation or restatement of the requirements that already exist in Title 12 of the Geneva City Code. When I say that, what I mean is, in the code, it states that the definition of subdivision is a division of a lot into more than two parcels. Okay? So, the plat isn't necessarily the only protection. It's simply a restatement of a protection that the city already has under its own code.
Thank you.
Could we address sort of the general commentary we've heard from the public and testimony tonight?
Yes.
Great. So, to back way up for a second, we do appreciate everybody's testimony and, and even though we're here to put forward our, our petition for a 32-unit duplex development in the city of Geneva, we, we're also people and we all live in our own neighborhoods and we understand where everybody's coming from and we certainly appreciate the, the emotion and the, you know, the time everybody's taken away from, from the personal time. We heard tonight that this subject property is located in the heart of Geneva. We certainly agree with that. It's one of the, the reasons why we were so interested in acquiring and developing the property responsibly. But after we heard this is in the heart of Geneva, we were told that it's for families and that it has an R1 feel and there's a certain idea of the people that live in this heart of Geneva. We've also heard that the city has a need that's been identified in several documents to appeal to not just young families, but also residents of Geneva that are aging and would prefer to age in place. So, we must ask ourselves, should these empty nester residents be relegated to the outskirts of town? Should they be forced to live next to factories and industrial uses? Alternative transitional zoning? Or would it potentially make sense for folks that have been living in Geneva for 30 or 40, 40 years to be able to age in place in a neighborhood not unlike where they live today? That's why we're attracted to the property. We believe it's a responsible alternative zoning in that we have addressed the buffering surrounding the property. We have not connected any existing neighborhoods. There's two points of ingress and egress on Western Avenue, which is a large collector road through the heart of town. In regard to property values, we've talked about how our homes will average 2,300 square feet with an average price point in the 450s. That's approaching $200 per square foot. So, at that price per square foot, a 3,500 square foot detached, single-family home would, would be $700,000. So, I think it'd be unfair to say that, that these would have any adverse effect on surrounding property values of single-family because we are at a very strong price point for this size of home. We were asked, or the, the council was asked whether, you know, there's a guarantee that there could be no accusation of contract zoning in the future. Again, the city's own code protects us from that. We're just going to reaffirm that on the plat of subdivision. We volunteered to put more restrictive covenants in our declaration. The 1995 comprehensive plan that was paid for by the city of Geneva was discussed. Reminder that at this point, that's a 21-year-old plan. I know 1995 seems like it was just yesterday, but it's actually quite a while ago. In 1995, the average baby boomers were in their 30s, 40s, and early 50s. Those same residents are now in their 50s, 60s, and 70s. So, I think the underlying assumptions and, and goals of that comprehensive plan have evolved with the age of the average resident of the city of Geneva. It was asked whether there's a two-story risk. If we build out more of the second floor of these homes, could we end up with, with FARs greater than what's been proposed? We're actually close to the max FAR with the existing proposal and that's with single-level living and optional lofts on the second floor for secondary bedrooms. So, there will not be an opportunity to, in any significant way, increase the coverage of these units. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Uptown? Is there anybody who has not spoken that would care to speak? Sir, please approach the mic.
My name is Bill Kane. I live at 945 Dunston Road and there's been a lot of talk about the reasons we all should be comfortable because they're gonna guarantee or not have more than 32 units in this property. I think the main issue here is that most of the residents in this area, and I'm not talking for everybody, but I think I speak for a lot of them, they just want this to stay R1. I bought my home, I've been in Geneva since 1976. I have a, a, a new home of 10 years. I bought a tear-down on Dunston Road and built it, had no water issues. I don't want water issues. So, I would just ask that this council or this committee, vote as if you had a home directly adjacent to this property, how would you wanna see it handled? I looked into the zoning. It was R1 when I bought. I want it to stay R1. I think most people do. Vote as if you had property adjacent to this. How would you feel you want this to be?
Thank you. Any other, anyone else care to speak?
Bob Schiffler, 1105 Ashbury Court. We live two blocks west of the proposed property. We've been there for over 35 years. I find many of the comments, oh, and I'd be very clear upfront that I'm in favor of this development. I think we need diverse housing in Geneva. I do not anticipate a adverse effect on my home values. I find a couple of comments interesting that we've heard tonight. There's been a lot of comments about traffic, particularly in the morning and in the afternoon when kids are going to school. If you wanna look at the source of that traffic at that time, look at the number of cars that are snaking through the parking lot at Western Avenue School. It's not traffic from this development that's causing that increase at those times. It's the parents who are taking their kids to school in the morning or picking them up at evening. That's the source of the, most of that traffic at that time. This development will not have a significant impact on that. There's also been comment about an impact on home values. At the time we bought our property in 1979, the greenhouse was located and in business, generating traffic, probably a lot more traffic than this development ever will. And at that time, there was no assurance that greenhouse was not gonna be in business for 30, 40, 50, or 60 years. And I've heard a lot of comments about people concerned about duplexes coming in the middle of R1 zoning. Myself and many of the people who've talked tonight bought their homes when the greenhouse was there, a commercial property in the middle of R1. And if there's an impact on home values, I see much more impact from a commercial property being in R1 than I do with these duplexes in this development. So, I, again, I'm in favor of this development. I think it's needed in Geneva. I do not think it'll have that adverse effect and I think many of the concerns are being dropped on this subdivision when they're really related to other factors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please.
My name's Jim Saul. I live on Country Squire. First of all, sir, didn't bring my glasses. Thank you very much. You are the one person that talked to both sides of the issue and brought up that things have to evenly be discussed. It seems that others came up with statistics to sell it and others came off of facts and even called the citizens speaking emotionally. My main concern myself, I can swim, water doesn't, you know, it concerns me a lot of these things. But seriously, the roads, 20 per whatever, 100 per year, you can play with those things. It's the critical points, the intersections, the times of day. Try to get your kids across Country Squire, across Western. And I know one thing, I mean, they talk about your homes. One thing you all have is family. And the first child that's hurt by a car or a truck, 'cause I don't see how you're gonna have those entrances and exits. It's not exactly necessarily the traffic, it's how it's flowing and how it has to come in and out. Am I gonna, you know, how many places do I have to look? I wanna thank each of you for listening to us and I especially wanna thank my fellow citizens and neighbors. I respect all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on the item at hand, I just want to reread it. We do have a motion and a second. Again, this is a vote that's being taken in Committee of the Hope, a recommend, a recommending body to the City Council. The motioner and second were originally?
Marx and Sino.
Marx and Sino. And the item of business is to consider approval of a draft ordinance rezoning, zoning map amendment, the subject realty from the R1 low-density, single-family residential district to the R6 medium-density, two- and three-family residential district applicant K Havonian Homes. Please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Jimmer Deki?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simoni?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Again, I feel simple yay or nay to be a disservice. So, when we first started reviewing proposed developments like this?
Please, please. Doing the right to talk. Please.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion fails 82. Since the motion, since this motion is failed? We'll consider development. Okay, giving the, I'm sorry, just one minute.
Members of the City Council, the reason you're going to consider the next issue is that under our code, amendments to the zoning ordinance are determined by the City Council, not by this committee. So, this is a recommending committee only. So, you need to go to the next step and then you'll consider it on, I guess, September 6th.
Yeah, it would be my recommendation that given the lateness of the hour, we generally do not, once we approach 10 o'clock, we make a decision whether or not we're going to continue with the meeting. I think it's prudent at this point that I would entertain a motion. I think it's prudent at this point that I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and that this item would be carried over to the next... Both items would be carried over. Items B and Item C would be carried over to the next regularly scheduled Committee of the Whole meeting, which is scheduled for?
August 22nd.
August 22nd. Please, please, everybody, wait, let's just, before we...
I'm unable to attend the August 22 meeting for the policy discussion on the ice rinks. On this item with the subdivision, it really should not be approved. The zoning would have to be in place in order for the subdivision to be approved. So I don't know how much discussion we're planning to have on that item, but if there's a feeling that we need to discuss that item in more detail, then it ought to be continued. But it really should not be recommended for approval if the zoning is not in place.
Do I have a motion on Item 1B to consider approval of a draft resolution approving a preliminary final Plata subdivision for Geneva Meadows subdivision, K. Hovonian Homes?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? Motion by Bruno, second by Sino. Believe we've had the discussion. Please take the roll.
Richard Marx?
I guess clarify, are we, were we going to move this off, or are we going to...
No, as David mentioned, if the zoning, if the recommendation for the zoning was in the negative, there's no reason to discuss this.
Okay.
Because you have to have the zoning to have the plan.
Okay, understand.
Rather than dislexpedit the process.
Jimmer Deki?
Nay.
Mary Sino?
Nay.
Tom Simonian?
Nay.
Ron Singer?
Nay.
Mike Bruno?
Just bit of a description. I don't want this vote to think that we are dismissing the project, but I think we need to discuss it in some other context and some other zoning context. I will vote nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Don Cummings?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maloud?
Nay.
Question fails. Would I have a question, point of order? Question? Are we going to revisit the zoning piece of this equation?
So the reason this is different than our normal Cal City Council procedure is because the city code specifically says these have to be, zoning has to be considered by the City Council, which is not this body. It's this body, but not acting in this format.
Right.
So that's why it's different. So all three of these items will appear on the City Council meeting for the September 6th meeting.
So we're going to...
We have the recommendation, you know, not to approve.
But we're revisiting them again?
It will come before the City Council again. Point of order?
Will we revisit, will we revisit the change of zoning?
Yeah.
At that time as well?
All three items.
All three items will be on the September 6th.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm talking about a new zoning code.
Just what we have before us.
Just these items, as written.
As written.
Point of order?
Singer?
Yes, thank you. Will not these items then become part of the consent agenda?
No.
No, it was not voted on unanimously. Alderman Bruno?
Point of order then, so if it will, where will be the appropriate opportunity to flesh out other potential zoning options?
It would not be when this is addressed at City Council. It would probably be in strategic plans and discussions that we have in November, or other specially, other special Committee of the Whole meetings that we call, which would be publicized.
Yeah, I'd hate for it to wait till November.
It would not be correct to do it without publication, and with the publication, it would show these three items as written, so.
Certainly, but I think it's important. I mean, it'd be a disservice to, you know, the petitioner to just say, well, maybe we'll talk about it in November.
Okay, I'll leave it up for the committee then. For Item C, would you care to address it or continue? It's a matter for the committee. Continue?
It's a policy session, so we can just reschedule it.
There's no vote here.
But there are people here.
There are people here.
You know what?
Okay, let me clarify for the committee. We are moving on to Item C now, so this...
Jimmer Deki, just a quick question if I may. Could you just clarify for those of us who do not understand the process, what happens next with the previous order of business? Just a point of clarification for us. Thank you very much.
These three items will both be advanced to the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting. All three items will appear just as they have been, but there will be a negative recommendation from the Committee of the Whole going forward to the full City Council.
For the two items.
I'm sorry. For Items B and C. I'm sorry.
There won't be anything on August 22nd. It'll be the September 1st meeting in September for the City Council.
Is everybody clear on that? Which will be a Tuesday in September.
All three items, right?
Correct.
Okay.
One will have a positive recommendation regarding the comprehensive plan, the other two will have a negative recommendation. Sir?
Would it be possible to be on the August 22 agenda?
It's a Committee of the Whole. It's a Committee of the Whole meeting.
Yeah, for what purpose?
We have certain contractual obligations with the seller, and we would need to vote before August 30.
I don't believe we can.
It's a Committee of the Whole.
I don't believe so.
Last week, Monday, there was a special meeting of the City Council that was already scheduled for August 22nd, so we're looking to hold that date. That was already approved last Monday.
Yeah, yeah. I think the City Council already tabled the comprehensive plan matter to the September meeting. So that action is frozen. It's over with. So it's already gone to the September meeting, not to the August 22 date. So to be consistent, I think all these matters have to be carried forward to that September meeting, that first meeting in September.
Got to be consistent.
Thank you. So once again, for the committee, moving on to Item C, this is a policy discussion. No vote will be taken. We do have people here that want to speak to the issue. They have been very patient, waiting for the last three hours. I'll leave it up to the committee at this point, if you would like to entertain it.
How long's the presentation? Do we have a presentation?
We have a very brief presentation, just to kind of highlight some of our research.
It'd be my recommendation that we allow this person, that we move forward. Okay, on to the next item of business. We have a policy discussion regarding temporary ice rinks presented by Nick Westendorf, Community Development Intern. Nick, the floor is yours.
All right, very good. Well, you took care of my introduction. I haven't met most of you or had the pleasure yet, but I'm the newest Community Development Intern, Nick Westendorf, pursuing my master's degree at Northern Illinois. So this evening, I'm going to introduce the ice rink topic to y'all and seek some direction for staff. So some history, currently, there is no existing ordinance for temporary ice rinks. We treat it as an accessory structure, so similar to a tennis court or playground equipment. We do not allow it in the street yard, and the setbacks must be five feet from the side and rear lot lines. So this has created a problem. Last winter, the city identified five temporary ice rinks that were located in the street yard. The code enforcement officer notified the owners of the property that for moving forward, the ice rinks must be located solely in the rear yard of the property, but not allowed in any of the street yards. As you can see by the illustration here, the corner lot produces a unique hardship, if you will, for a location of these ice rinks, and all five of the ice rinks that we noted and sent notices to were located in the corner lot. So there were others, I'd like to note, there were others in the city, but all of them were located in the rear yard as allowed. Additional problems that arise, the city receives complaints from the neighbors. The ice rinks can have impacts on the character of the neighborhood. They can be seen as a disruption to the public realm. As you can see, they can be placed fairly close to the sidewalk. This is a picture that was actually taken in the city last year when this was being constructed. Similar uses are not allowed within the city. Accessory structures aren't allowed in the street yard. This could be seen as such. Additional problems for aesthetics, noise from children playing hockey or skating, lighting, a lot of times temporary lighting is put up around these rinks that can have adverse effects on the neighbors, and safety with hockey pucks. So the policy question we have here this evening is, should we regulate temporary ice rinks? And if we should proceed to draft an amendment, a text amendment to the ordinance and bring to the Planning Commission?
Could I add a little question?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Can't hear you, Mr. Maloud. Is the question, should we regulate, is the question really, do we want to allow them in street yards?
Question is going to be, do we want to allow them in the street yards, and would we like additional regulations?
Because I don't really feel like going to regulate what's in the backyard.
Right.
Okay.
Alderman Singer?
I pissed off enough people today, maybe I do.
Hold on, Nick, are you finished with your, you have more presentation?
I have more presentation, but if he has a...
Yeah, are there any ramifications to the city regarding any injury of the nature if we should allow such an issue to come forward? Is there any liability?
That all the lawyers just left to him from Yale? Except Stephanie, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not in this state.
Can we ask, may I ask staff to look into that?
Yeah, I would say it's like anything else, but no, I don't think it poses any greater liability. It would be the liability on the homeowner.
On the homeowner.
So if I may continue.
Please do.
Seeking direction on how to regulate these temporary ice rinks. We reached out to the Planning Advisory Service, which is a service planners use to gather information from across the state and nationally. They gather information on ordinances that have been passed and the process the communities have went through and summarize it for us. So they do a lot of the due diligence for us. And what we found is that many of the communities do not specifically regulate temporary ice rinks. Those that do have the regulations prohibit it in the street yard most generally, and also establish side and rear yard setbacks. Some communities have gone a step further, and they regulate the lighting requirements, the size that the rinks are allowed to be, the dates of operation that they're allowed to be put up and taken down. Some examples of these ordinances that we found, in Fenton, Michigan, they do not allow them in the street yard. They have established a four-foot setback on the side and rear property lines. They did also establish that the boards that go around the perimeter of the rink should not be of a certain height, and they established dates of operation. In Munster, Indiana, they did not have a specific ordinance regarding the street yard per se, but they just had language in there, not allowing it to be visible from the street, as well as establishing setbacks and dates of operation and lighting requirements. We have two more example ordinances from the Planning Advisory Service. Hinsdale, Illinois, did set a extensive screening for their temporary ice rinks, as well as a general setback for all the property lines and a height requirement for the structure. And then in Adena, Minnesota, they allow it in the street yard, but with an extensive setback, trying to mitigate the negative consequences. In addition to the Planning Advisory Service, we did survey our comp communities in the area. We had eight respondents, five of which do have specific regulations. They've drafted for these ice rinks, three of which handle it how we've been previously doing. They have no specific language to it. They treat it on a complaint basis and handle it case by case. Some of the comp community regulations that we found, the City of Crystal Lake does not allow it in the street yard and has a setback of five feet in the side and rear property. Lyle does not allow it in the street yard and has a little bit greater setback. And Batavia does allow it in the street yard with a five-foot setback on all property So this leads us into our next set of policy questions. Are ice rinks appropriate in the street yard? And do corner lots present a unique hardship that should be regulated differently than a standard lot? Given the two-street-yard scenario, generally, these ice rinks are pretty large, so it makes it difficult to comply with the current regulation for accessory structures. Also, should the dates of operation be restricted? We saw a lot of communities put up dates that within you're allowed to operate them. They noticed a lot of people were putting them up early to try to beat the cold weather, leaving them up later into the spring to wait until the snow thaw, take them down in warmer And are any additional regulations necessary, such as height of the structure, the materials to be used, lighting? Some municipalities did foot candle requirements or had some language in there that was a little bit more vague. Screening to not allow it to be seen, and the netting that should be used to prevent pucks from causing a safety issue. And as well, if we are going to regulate it, should we require a permit? And should there be a fee for such permit? Or shall there be enforced on a case-by-case complaint basis? Yeah, if directed, and we do proceed with a text amendment to the Planning Commission, one question staff did have is, should we notify the neighbors of the existing five rinks that were noted last year that were in the street yard before we proceed with that public hearing? And that is all I have.
Any questions from the deists first, for Nick?
Alderman Marx? Well, they are allowed as an accessory structure, so if they're in the rear yard and they meet whatever setback for that zoning district, then they're fine. If they're in the street yard, we handle them on a complaint basis.
Okay.
And those five were the only ones we had complaints on that were in a street yard.
They were in a street yard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the breadth of our complaints, some people didn't like the way it looked. Do we have specific complaints of lighting, noise? Well, I guess that would probably be the breadth of complaints. I can't remember what, all the content of your emails.
I didn't get to see the specific complaint itself. Our code enforcement officer handled them. Aesthetics was generally how he summarized it to me, the character of the neighborhood.
But given that it's, if all's unchanged, this is clearly in violation, if there were a complaint, we would be obliged to enforce that, it would seem.
Currently, we don't have regulations that specifically address temporary ice rinks.
Right.
So it's not called out as its own item in the zoning ordinance, but we've been treating it similarly to like a tennis court or sport court, playground equipment, any other accessory structure. So that's how we've been treating it, and that's kind of why we're here, is do we need to establish specific regulations for ice rinks?
Right, so if that were a tennis court?
Would not be allowed.
Right, and if someone did it and someone complained, we're obliged to take care of it. And I think we had consensus that we thought a seasonal use was appropriate, so I'd be curious to see what others think on certain concerns of noise and lighting. And I'd be curious to hear from the homeowners that, what's realistic? You know, it seems like if we had a two-foot surround, that would actually be a safety thing, people falling over it. So I'm not sure how it would shake out, but thanks.
Alderman Cummings?
To clarify something, did we have five complaints? Or did we have one complaint and then five enforcements?
Five complaints.
Because we did have five different complaints.
Five, for five different properties.
Yeah.
There may have been multiple complaints per property. We had five, five properties complain.
Okay, okay. And then generally, since Alderman Bruno asked, how do I feel about this? I think the more time outside, the better. I think that, you know, we have one of the top, I don't know what the, junior hockey teams in the country, and certainly the top league in the country right here in Geneva. We have long winters. I like the idea of people spending time outside playing. I think if we start regulating for kids playing hockey too tightly, we're going to get into a situation we were in back in the 90s when we were regulating laundry, hanging out on laundry lines. And, you know, I don't want to get into that. I think there is probably reasonable lighting, reasonable fencing, reasonable seasonality, reasonable size setback for these in backyard and side yard. And I know that there will be some complaints, there always are, but I... And I know that there will be some complaints, there always are, but I think the pros so outweighed the cons. I want to see kids outside. I want to see them mountain biking in the winter, playing hockey in the winter. And I'd like to see this lightly regulated and completely allowed.
Alderman Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Presently, we have an ordinance 11-3-3 regarding accessory buildings and usage. And that is no detached accessory billing or building shall occupy more than 25% of the area of the yard within such accessory structure is located. We probably would have to have some sense of what the size of the product would be as well. And, you know, I may have to disqualify myself when it comes to this issue because I was very active in the Proviso West Hockey Association when I was in my profession.
You're fine.
Goalies didn't wear masks back then.
No.
I think you're okay, Ron.
My two boys were very, were very involved in the hockey club, very expensive, I know that. And it really was parties at my house quite frequently with all those guys over there playing hockey in my backyard. It didn't bother me. I enjoyed it, but the people surrounding my area were not too pleased with all the noise and the commotion. So I just want to sit back and think about this, so you'll have to forgive me at this point in time as to a direction that I think I'd like you to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra.
I want to echo everything that Alderman Cummings said, but I want to emphasize a few aspects of it. To me, the temporary label doesn't just imply, it requires that we set dates. I'm worried that if we don't set dates, then maybe we have some sort of multipurpose thing in the side yard that's a hockey rink for a while, and then it's a roller hockey thing in the summertime and, you know, stuff like that. And we are looking to allow this temporarily, so I'd emphasize dates. I'd also be very interested, because winters are short, in some sort of hour regulation. I don't want, I don't, the one by my house, which is not in Geneva, they shut it down at 10, but they've got a Honda motor driving some pretty powerful lights, and I wouldn't want that on a school night, all night long. So my thing is dates and hours. And then as far as the, like Don said, there's got to be reasonable dimensions and stuff, but I'm not qualified to say what those are. I have no idea.
Thank you. Anybody else from the desk? Let's see, Alderman Kilburg first, then Simone.
Did you get any feedback on neighbors and property damage? I could see where you start launching a puck into the side of a house. You could do some damage to the siding, or you put a puck through a window. I mean, if it's in the backyard or a side yard, more likely in the backyard probably than the side yard. I mean, if you launched a puck, you could reach a neighbor's property. Did anybody give you any feedback on that?
Not something I had come across at this point.
I mean, I don't know if your homeowner's covers that.
One of the complaints I received was concerned about the puck going into the roadway and hitting parked cars or passing vehicles. They had nets on the one side of the rink, but not along the entire rink.
I assume this is primarily boys, and then we got, mostly, we got pickup hockey games, and we don't have much figure skating going on out there probably.
My daughter figure skates at a neighborhood rink.
Okay.
I'd rather not give the address because you're there.
But I would say, I'd say the vast majority of these rinks are used for pickup hockey games. Is that right?
Yeah, usually.
We'll have you guys come up.
Usually figure skating and hockey.
Yeah, we're going to have you guys come up to the mic. I want to hear. I'm dying to hear what you guys have to say. You stuck around for three and a half hours, you're going to get to speak. Anybody else? Let's start, first Alderman Simone.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
Feel like you get more respective, I go sit in the audience. I look at this like the garage sale issue we addressed a little while back, that there's a handful of incidents and trying to wrap ordinances, permits, all that stuff around it. To me, you know, it just bugs me and the whole personal property rights issues that I have. And I would prefer to just, until it becomes a major issue, the only one that I see here is possibly the, the street yard issue. But other than that, I, you know, I think noise ordinances will cover the noise. You know, and it's one of those things that, you know, if it gets too rambunctious, they call up police out and they deal with it that way. But I don't think wrapping a whole lot of stuff around this is going to be, for a handful of complaints, is going to be worth us getting into permitting and charging fees and dates and times and all that other stuff. I think folks that do this stuff are basically pretty responsible. I'd rather give them the benefit of the doubt and deal with them on one-off situations than to start putting together a whole ordinance around it personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Burke?
I'll be quick, just ditto to what Alderman Cummings and Maladra said. I love these rinks. It makes me happy when I see kids skating out on them. Like I said, my daughter skates at a neighborhood one. We also use the one at, well, they have three at Wheeler Park that the Geneva Park District offers to reserve for hockey, I believe. I'd like to, I could, I'd be okay with a little bit of regulation on them in terms of hours and dates. I think the calls Alderman Bruno and I got this winter were about, these look junky, they're, you know, not, they just look, people complaining, they just look junky. Well, I think Northern Illinois looks pretty junky in winter, and if I see people outside, it makes me happy, but I could see some dates. I thought, one of the, one of them had a real long, Indiana, I think, I thought that was kind of long, October to April, you know? I could see a November to March kind of thing. I'd like to believe that people do the right thing, but if I'm the neighbor of one of these rinks, I'd also like to know it's coming down March 15th or whatever. I think the side yard's the issue, that's the one I'm struggling with. So I mean, this one on the left would be, you'd call that the street yard, right?
Correct.
And a street yard is anything, a yard that you can see from the street? Is that the definition?
Correct. I could go back to the...
I saw the diagram, that's right.
Yeah, we got it.
I don't know, that's a tough one for me, but I like to see the rinks, and I guess I feel like if we put some light regulations in place, at least the neighbors know they're not up for forever and, you know, there are some hours and things like that, so, yeah. Thanks.
Alderman Kilburg.
How are the police enforced complaints thus far? How many complaints have we had over the last few years on an annual basis? And what do the police do when they get called out? And how do they handle it?
David? Or Stephanie?
I really don't, I honestly don't know if the police department has responded to incidents.
It would actually be a code enforcement.
Well, yeah.
Generally speaking, Alderman Kilburg, when the police are called out to an incident like this, it's, forgive me for borrowing the phrase that you're familiar with, it's the good fences make good neighbors policy. Gentlemen, have you spoken to your neighbors about this? Damn it, turn off the light.
Yeah.
For God's sake, have you knocked on doors? That's typically what we do, similar to the fire pit issue. You know, there's one incident that Tara and I and Mike are certainly aware of with respect to a hockey rink, and it was a lighting issue. And it was, it was like driving into Shea Stadium when it came down. But that wasn't dressed through, just, hey, come on, guys. So, at least that's been my experience.
Any other comments from the desk? Okay, thank you. Alderman Bruno.
Existing noise limits, noise after what, 9:00 PM weekdays? Or 10:00? What about lights? Bright lights in the backyard or side yard? Is that a, must-go-light?
Security lights, security lights.
We have lighting standards for commercial properties and parking lots, but I don't think we really have anything established for residential properties.
Well, it seems, it seems we kind of have regulation here. I think we're, my sense is we're just looking, basically, are we going to allow side yards? That seems to be the thing. I'm, I'd be in favor of a seasonal permit. But, I'm sorry, I don't actually want a permit, but just allowing it seasonally with restricted months and lights off at, I don't know, what's the latest? Well, we'll hear from the residents as to how late they operate.
I'm up here in a minute. You know, the question about side yards and back is, to me, this is probably a side yard that's less intrusive to a neighbor than somebody that stuffs it behind their house. I mean, I don't know that the side yard issue, where it's placed at, carries a lot of weight in my thought process through this about whether or not we want to have any kind of a text amendment, which I'm probably leaning towards Alderman Simone's position as well with that. But any other comments from the committee before I ask?
I think what staff is looking for, though, is because the code does not allow accessory uses in a side yard, if there's a complaint, the code does not provide us to say, oh, we're going to look the other way. So there needs to be some direction as far as that side yard goes, because currently they are, they would not be allowed, as we treat them like tennis courts and basketball courts and those kinds of things.
Sure, go ahead. Come on, I'm pleased. Please approach the mic.
Got to say it into the microphone.
Come on up to the mic, please. By my calculation, you guys have about three and a half hours that we owe you, so.
521 South Street. So I just didn't know, because we didn't know we're in violation, because it's not stated specifically ice rinks or rinks in general. And so I guess my question is, in the 11B, whatever it was, 11.33B, does it actually say or any other structure? Because when I read it, it lists specifically structures you couldn't do, and that was it. So that's why we said, ice rink's not mentioned, why is it a violation? And so we said, do you want to put it in there? And how do you do that?
Mr. DeGroot.
If something's not listed and it's not included in language or similar uses, it's actually prohibited by omission. We've taken a more lenient stance, saying that it is a similar use as a tennis court or basketball court or sport court, and therefore should be allowed in the rear yard. And now that they're in the street yard, we're asking the question if we should have these specific regulations.
Thank you for your time today, we appreciate it. That's actually my rink on the left. I'm sorry, I'm Coley Connolly, 1019 Con Court. So that is actually my house on the left there. That's obviously prior to putting up all of the netting and some of the security features that I put up. Two, 18 inches high on the side, we try not to be that obtrusive. Due to the way the land is in the backyard, I can't put the rink, put the rink in the back, so that was the best place for me to put it. It's not very big, it's 25 by 75, so by all means, it's not a huge rink. So we never have more than a few kids on it at one time. There's always adult supervision. In terms of the timing, we try and self-regulate, at least I do. You know, kids aren't out there past 10, like you said. You know, the lighting, we have some halogen lights up there, but it's nothing, again, too obtrusive. So just hoping you guys can kind of take that into consideration. And I know we drafted a letter and I think sent that out to everybody, just showing you that we're definitely willing to work with you and hope that you can, you know, just guide us and know that it's all in good intentions to have the kids out there playing during the winter season. And we put it up, we try to put it up, or at least I try and do mine, maybe around Thanksgiving time, just to set it in there before the ground gets too hard. And last couple winters, usually we have it down by March anyway, so that's just, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Did you get a complaint about that one?
I personally have not. I have not heard from the police, the Geneva Police, ever. A lot of the neighbors come over and spend time on our rink. We only shoot in one section, which is on the left-hand side there, so I put a net there with an eight-foot net, just to try and make sure the kids are always shooting that way. But again, it's not an eight-on-eight, five-on-five, six-on-seven, I mean, it's not a big game by any means, so.
You got bleachers and...
We do not, but we're always, we're always adding to it. If you have any ideas, thank you.
It's, you know, how often do you get to use? It seems like I drive by the one that's on the corner of South and Seventh, South and Eighth. And it just seems that the thing is a water pit, much more than an ice pit. A lot of winters that it's been up, I mean, how many days?
I'd rather be more cooperative.
How many days on average do you guys really, I mean, the last two years, tell me just...
I filled mine on New Year's Eve the last two seasons, and I think it was down, or I cut it out by the first part of March, end of February.
Probably eight weeks is when you really might get ice. I mean, I skated on ice in the Chicago parks all the time. It seemed like they were longer winters then, but I walked uphill to school both ways too, so. So about eight weeks, kids are really out there. Okay, so.
We need some direction.
Yeah, sir?
Brian Borgwitz, 1111 James Street, and I think mine was in the previous, where the nets were on the ground and, you know, big, big mess over there. But anyway, all your concerns are definitely our concerns. We're parents, we're community members, we're concerned about all these safety issues and what have you. So we want to comply with that, so that's why we want to draft something that makes it a win-win-win for everybody. So hopefully we can see to some kind of compromise that doesn't require a lot of regulation and permitting and things like that, so we appreciate that. But definitely the street yard thing is an issue, because it specifically says that. That was what the document said from Mr. Forney. So, you know, we really need to get clarity on that, because the way that was written, that you put the rink up, cops are going to show up. So, you know, we just got to get some clarity of the city staff, make sure that that happens, and, you know, hopefully we can, we can make it, make it work.
So as a point of order, to get that clarity, it would require a text amendment?
Thank you all for staying late tonight and having this discussion. I know this is something that came up kind of last spring. We wanted to make sure we got it on tonight's agenda, because in order to move forward with the text amendment and get the regulations in place for the next season, we really need to get the ball rolling. So the direction we're looking for is really just to have the planning commission public hearing on the proposed regulations and whether or not we should consider the street yard. I think from what I'm hearing is a consensus that it could be allowed with some light regulation, maybe on hours of operation, and kind of relying on our existing noise and lighting ordinances for everything else.
So is that the general consensus of the committee, is that we, in order to do this, it will have to go to the, to the planning commission for a text amendment? Is it the general consensus that we're okay with having them in the side yards and let the planning commission run the process to be sure that everybody gets equal input for that, rather than us try to?
Yeah.
I mean, we need, we have to do that. It seems to make sense to me that at this point, we would do that and let it flesh itself out through the process, and I think that's what you guys are looking forward to. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
The final question I would have is typically with the text amendment that applies citywide, we don't have to notify surrounding property owners? Being that this has, we have received complaints on specific rinks and street yards, should we notify the surrounding property owners?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a sign of the faith, we should.
Okay.
I agree.
Very good.
Okay, so we're clear that we will seek the text amendment for side yards and notify people within, neighbors within?
I think we just do the standard notice to do within 250 feet.
Great. Anything else?
Let it also be known, if we could, all of us could contain our rinks in the backyard and never harm a soul, that's what we would do.
Figure that. Got it.
My wife doesn't want it beside her either.
She'll be so...
You won that bet?
Yeah. She'll be...
Well, I think that brings us down to new business. Is there any new business anyone wishes to bring before the council?
Way late, I apologize, Dorothy. Beautification has their fall planting coming up on August 27th. I should have made note of it at the end of the previous, the city council meeting, but I missed it, so. August 27th, fall planting, and in the meantime, vote early and vote often. The Tour de Flor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other new business? Then a motion to...
Motion to adjourn, second.
Would be in order. Motion by Simone and second by Marks. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.